That what happens?
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Big 5:30, I now call it order. Two thousand, twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three budget workshop. This third day of August two thousand and twenty-two. In chambers of the Town Hall of the Town of Lake Placid. Chief, would you, uh, would you give us a? An inv- a quick invocation? Please rise.
Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day to gather as a town government, as, as people of this community. And we ask you, Lord, to be among us, let us do your work, your will, and may you just bless this community with a financial windfall to continue to do the greatest that we can do for this whole entire community. Father, we praise you, we thank you, glorify you in the precious son of Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Bloods and ages to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Holbrook?
Here.
Councilmember Royce?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Zapp?
Here.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda is the FY two thousand twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three proposed town budget and CRA budget. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Rachel and I'll let you take it from here.
Mayor, we started on the, the annual, the annual budgets for the town, um, first. And could we skip to the utility department first? Because they got more stuff going on with the, every other department is kind of the standard only thing, um, difference on those departments is just prices just went up, price increases on some line items. But other than that, um, utility have like, um, a rate increase on their, on their rates and the revenue, it affects the revenue. And on the slide, it have a page number, but I don't have a page number, so I'm gonna see what it is. On page number seven starts the revenue for utilities. And Kevin will have to explain the rate structure on that one.
So if you're looking at the revenue, the, uh, the total budget is based on, on a rate increase of approximately ten percent in water and twelve percent in wastewater. So, uh, just a kind of quick overview, so you know where it's at. We built the, uh, built through all the expenses and I'll go kind of a little bit backwards, but we went, um, through all of our expenses, looked at our increases. I took the, uh, month ending in June and projected out where we would be spending through the rest of the year. To verify where, um, particularly some of our increases, and we've had some fairly large ones in most of our chemical costs and fuel costs in particular. So, uh, and then we built back in some capital because the capital has been decreasing from the last rate increase of two thousand and fourteen. So we built back in some capital. So your, uh, so your big change, if you're looking at the first page, which is water systems revenue, is in the water utility revenue, which reflects that rate projected or proposed, um, rate increase. So that's the big change in the, uh, revenue and the, uh, water system revenue and the same thing in the water wastewater revenue. With the exception of, so you added a position, which is my position. But Joe's position is paid through by the grant, so you'll see the grant administration reimbursement from the Septic to Sewer project. So basically, my additional position's a wash because the grant's paying for Joe's position for the wastewater Septic project. So it's kind of a quick on the, uh, on the revenue. If you have any questions on the revenue side, we can go that way or however you wanna. It's my first time for your budget hearings, so tell me how you want me to.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So Joe or Kevin, the grant that we are gonna start receiving funds for in the next fiscal year, that doesn't play, we don't show it in this wastewater revenue stream?
I'm sorry. The grant itself is in a budget by itself because it's kind of, it's kind of isolated for grant tracking only. But it just showing a transfer showing that it's gonna reimburse for his, his expenses for cost.
And the forty, you'll see that in a separate budget. The forty million is in a completely separate budget and there's just a, an expense line to go into the revenue line for this. No confusion about what's the grant and all the engineering and construction on that. That's all part of a separate grant. It makes it a lot cleaner for our DEP if you ever doing an audit for that, because that's all grant. It's no, there's no confusion about the normal day-to-day operations.
Is that what it says at the bottom of that page where it says water sewer capital improvement?
Um, no, the grant would actually be on. The grant is on the three hundred, three hundred account on page six.
This is Joe Barber for the record. We had to set up a, a whole different chart of accounts, um, to keep track of at least all the expense side for that grant. That corresponds to each one of the, uh, task items on the grant work plan. So I don't know if she's showing all those, but we were accounting for that separately.
Yeah.
And we just did an estimate. What was the number we estimated, Rachel?
Two million.
Yeah, I, I'm just estimating, we could spend two million this year on engineering fees if I can get everybody going.
Yeah, this, so this is the revenue side of it and on down to the bottom is the expense side of it, which is kind of washes revenue expense. Because I guess at this point in time, you're not sure how much is gonna get done in this fiscal year, so.
So I think what you just said, Joe, just to keep me straight, all you anticipate in the next fiscal year spending is about two million dollars?
Yeah, because no construction will happen the next fiscal year. Um, we know we have a contract already for one million for the wastewater treatment plant design. And just doing a guess on some of the others, I gave us another million. And we're not locked into that, these are just some budget numbers, so if something changes, we can do a budget amendment later down the road. But just realize all those funds should be reimbursed by DB, by, uh, the grant funds.
And the only money that would come, that would flow into the regular water waste utility is the reimbursement, the ninety thousand dollars in?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that as we go out to the public and we talk about, you know, significant overall, excuse me, Town Lake Placid budget, that we can very clearly explain, you know, how much of that is due to this grant? So that the citizenry is not concerned that we all of a sudden raised the budget by a couple of million dollars, you know? So we just seem to be able to clearly delineate, and I'm obviously speaking primarily to John now, that it's very clear what is general fund and what's in these enterprise funds. And so that someone doesn't see a big number and say, what the heck's going on, you know? Okay, thank you. And so we're, we're on water then, I guess. Okay.
Yes, huh? That's, um, so that's on the water revenue. If you want to start going through water expenses, we can.
Yes, I'm gonna go down to the expenses. I just have one more question on the water utility revenue. I see there's, uh, a bit of an increase there, too. What do you attribute that increase?
The increase in the revenue?
Yes.
That's based on a proposed rate increase?
Okay.
Of ten percent. Now, we're changing the structure a little bit, so it's, it's ten percent on the base rate and ten percent on the usage. We're also changing the step. And so the steps are, it used to be one to seven thousand, seven to nine thousand, there were seven steps. And we're reducing those to five steps in blocks of five thousand. And there was some confusion about the way that was done before. We're trying to do it in the way that ADG and all our other utilities do it. So if you're in the first block of five thousand, you pay three dollars and nine cents, um, or currently two eighty-one. So then in your second, if you hit to the six thousand mark, you're gonna increase another twenty-five cents a thousand gallons. And for the next five thousand, you pay that increased step. So it's encouragement to stay below the five thousand or in a block. It's a conservation rate is what the Water Management District calls it, basically. So the total value, total number of steps is again slightly higher, not total number, total value of the steps is higher than the old value. And they're spaced differently. So, but the total revenue is about a ten percent increase based on last year and, uh.
And these rate increases have already been approved?
No. These are proposed and you'll hear the first reading on Monday night.
Okay.
And for that discussion, and Joe will be handling that discussion, I'll be at the Rural Water Conference. Um, but that's the first reading, the final, and you have, you have that one and then September is the second reading. So you have those two, um, those two actual council, uh, meetings to make any changes that you want. And we've got the budget hearings tonight and Wednesday night and whatever is you want to tweak the budget. So if we don't want to do the rate increase, then we're gonna have to modify budgets, the expense side. So that's, but that's what the, what it's based on is, uh, a ten percent rate increase.
Okay.
And, um.
Just, just so council knows, on your laptop and on, on the sheet, on the, on your projector computers is a binder package. Now, it has a budget package, but it also has several things in case you want to go to it, like the RPAC thing I sent out. And, and the, uh, the rate increase is at the very end of that, end of the package on your computer. So.
Thank you.
Okay, so now this is the expense side for the water.
So if you're looking up at the very beginning of that for pretty much everything from unemployment compensation up, that is something that Rachel calculates for us. We did do a reallocation because Joe is now ninety percent in the wastewater side.
Excuse me a second, what page is this on, on our?
This would be on your page. Don't have a page number on this one. Seventeen.
Got it. Sorry.
Nope, that's. And so because of that change in allocation, you'll see that some of the, uh, those changes are based primarily on that, on that allocation change. Now, some of the other notable, notable changes as you're going through besides the, uh, chemicals that I mentioned and fuel that we're all aware of is postage. We're moving to a, in the next two months, I believe, move into a paper billing, which will provide you some more information. It's a full page as opposed to the postcards. So our postage rates are going up and we'll have more expense in the letter on envelope. So those, so the postage rate goes up with, along with that. So that's a, you'll see that increase of, um, about twenty-five hundred dollars, but it also increases our, um. I just lost the, uh, some of the other, uh. It's in office supplies, so you'll have an additional increase in office supplies for the paper and envelopes as opposed to the postcards.
The reason for that would be?
That was before me, the decision to be made, but the, uh, so Rachel, I don't know if you wanna.
We had a lot of complaints about the, the bill on the postcard. And every month we getting maybe like thirty of those postcards back where they're saying we can't find people. So they get somehow lost in the mail or, um, somehow jam, jam in their machines or what have you. So kind of trying to decrease how many, um, returned postcards we get versus the customers notified of their bill before they say, I never got notice. So.
Thank you.
It does give you a little bit more space to put information because the postcard's very limited. So today we mailed out thirty-two hundred and forty-eight notices for the proposed rate increase that, uh, Bert sent me the language so that we'd have the correct language by law, that we have to notify all the customers. And, uh, so those went out because it's very limited on what you can put on the postcard to cover those, that information. And you can use it for other, and I think it's a good, a good way to get information out to your, to your customers. If you have changes, one of the ones I'm thinking about is the garbage change and things like that. It gives you an ability to put a lot more information on that bill so you can get that out to the customers so they can see it.
Okay.
So if I might misread, the things that stand out to me, obviously, is there's basically ninety thousand dollars of reduction in salaries. And then if you come down towards the bottom of this page on lines four oh one, six, five, three, three, six, three, one, and six, four, four. I take it, and I think I've talked to Mr. Barber, we're, we're doing an additional ninety thousand dollars. Is this some of the new electronic meters that we're getting in? Okay. And then, excuse me, on six forty-four, new equipment, you know, we're going up from spending a couple of grand or maybe last year sixteen to now spending a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So what are we buying that costs a hundred and twenty-five grand?
That is a vacuum jet trailer as opposed to a vacuum truck, which is four hundred thousand dollars. And part of that is in, part of that is in the wastewater. So they're about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a trailer that we'll be able to use for cleaning lift stations and for cleaning out or, um, if we've got, they call it vacuum excavation. So if you're trying to get a valve or a leak, you can actually use the jetter and vacuum out the dirt to clean out an area. So, uh, it kind of takes the places, well, it takes place of equipment we don't have at the moment. So, or trying to call a, somebody else with a vac truck to come in as a contractor. So it gives us the ability to do that. So it's a, it's a vac check, uh, vacuum jetter trailer combination. So that's what that big line item is.
I'll add to that, we've been trying to buy one of those for several years and we've been budgeting, but couldn't quite figure out how to get a used one. So I guess this year and this, this year's budget, we're, we're trying to, trying to get one.
So I take it this saves us manpower and makes you people when they're fixing stuff, their job more efficient or easier or whatever, or cleaner environment?
We, we clean lift stations on a very regular basis. And so this will give us the ability right now, mostly we're doing it by hand, but this will give us the ability to use that jet to, and for that piece of it. It, um, gives them a piece of equipment that reduces the labor significantly, the amount of labor that's put into that. Also, as we do the, uh, as we do the meter change outs, those will be when I talk about the vacuum excavation, instead of us sitting there with a little hand shovel, trying to dig around the meter to get the meter cleaned so we can change it out. You can take that little jet out around it and vacuum it out and it'll save quite a bit of time on changing out those meters. Because we plan on doing all of those meters in-house with our own personnel. That's the ninety thousand is meters, not, so we're trying to do that and do that in-house, so.
So there's no additional labor for that project? It's all just materials on the, the meters itself?
Yes, all just materials.
Is this also, can it be used for wastewater vacuuming? You know, if you've got a wastewater pipes that are clogged up, is that, you, you commonly see those on DOT and stuff using those?
It's, it's used for quite a bit, it has, it's multipurpose really, but I think where it'll save us the most time is that they can dig a hole in two seconds rather than twenty minutes. So on line breaks and things, they'll, they, you know, obviously when there's a bunch of water, they can put this thing in the hole and get the water out of the hole to try to repair it, sometimes under pressure. But we've had to spend hours sitting waiting on it with a little tiny pump, trying to pump out the hole.
Or, or people are out of service, you have to shut the lines off and wait for them to evacuate before you can make the repair.
Yep, and then anytime we need to dig something up, it's, it's basically just a pressure washer with a vacuum attachment to it. And they just, you know, pressure wash the dirt and you can dig a hole in about two and a half seconds. So I think the time savings on this and the, the labor will be great. That's why we've, I've had it in the budget for the last several years, just haven't had, been able to get one.
Okay.
So it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, basically? If I look and I see nine, a hundred and twenty-five here and ninety-eight under wastewater?
The ninety is for the meters.
That's all water. Yes, you're, you're only on the water account right now, so yeah, oh.
But, but this trailer you said was gonna be used for both? So the trailer costs two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, in the neighborhood, yes.
Okay.
Where are you getting that other hundred thousand?
Well, they divided and put some of it in wastewater, so if you go to the next page, you'll see where there's ninety-eight thousand some odd dollars.
Yeah, part of the split. The other advantage, and we didn't talk about it, but, um, if you're waiting on locates, if you have a line break and you know there's fiber cable in there, you're not trying to dig because you, you'll use the jetter and expose those lines. So it's, again, it's vacuum excavation and it does, there's, there's a, a lot of uses for that. And it will get used, it will get used a lot. We used our jetter, we did not have the vac trailer, we had a local plumber that had a vacuum truck, we used him quite a bit, um, because all we had was the jetter. But we used the jetter extensively and then tried a mud pump and it wasn't nearly as efficient, but it was what we had.
Yeah, I, I think this piece of equipment, whenever we bought the, the ground penetrating radar, that was a complete game changer for our guys out there. I think this one will be too. So when DOT did the, the signalization, they went out there and located all of our stuff because they had one of those big truck mounted ones. And they literally found something with ground penetrating radar and took that machine and went, and went right down and they could see what it was and locate it. So like Kevin's saying, in that same manner, whenever we have an emergency pipe break, they can take that jetter out there and literally just cut a line across and see what's there and get to digging, rather than waiting for hours for the guy to come out and locate it before we can actually go and, and fix something. Sometimes the guys will go ahead and dig, but you know, they're not totally confident, they're not gonna hit something. Um, I, I think this piece of equipment will be a game changer, most utilities already have one. So we're, we've, we've been doing a lot of manual labor because we don't have this.
So while we're on water, let's talk about line six fifty-three. Did we buy a truck last year or did we not buy a truck last year and we just rolled it over and we're buying a truck this year?
We ordered a truck in September of twenty-one.
Okay.
Wrote that purchase order, canceled that purchase order in October. We're rewriting the, we rewrote the purchase order in this year.
Okay.
It will not be in in this year. So we will cancel that purchase order and write another one for next year. But that money is in this, was in last year's budget and this is in this year's budget. And then it's gonna have to, it'll end up coming out of the reserve because I do have a truck for next year's budget. So they were planned on being two years apart. They may be still two years apart, but they may be a lot closer together because according to Alan Jay, if we get this next truck ordered by October seventeenth, they will make it in January or February. The truck we ordered last September might be made in October or November.
Okay, I apologize, I'm sure I'm the only one confused. So there are ultimately going to be two new trucks?
Ultimately, we're trying to replace a two thousand four and a two thousand seven, yes. So if you look at this year's budget at the fifty-five thousand dollars that's in the vehicle purchase, um, that's in the current year budget. We're not ordering, we're not ordering, you ordered that in twenty twenty-one and it get carried over into this year's budget. So we're still waiting on that truck, which didn't come in last year, won't come in this year. And then next year, we want to order another truck. So we, yeah, so ultimately, we're looking for two new trucks to replace the two thousand four and two thousand seven.
So bottom line, we increased revenue by two hundred and five thousand dollars and seventy-two dollars and we increased expenses by two thousand and five and seventy-one dollars. So we've saved a whole dollar somewhere. Is that the long and short of it?
I guess so.
And all that, all that revenue increase basically, or most of that revenue increase comes from the anticipated rate change?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, what would help us is if we continued to see a little bit of a building splurge in these impact fees and all that and, you know, if they continued to, to climb more than they historically were.
How many new employees does this entail?
New employees is none.
None?
No, we're not, we're not anticipating any new employees. And the goal is, even though we're planning on a very large expansion, if we time this with our cell read meters, those employees, we will not be adding employees, we will be converting employees. So anticipation is to, at least my goal is to use technology and equipment to replace labor. Meter readers we roll through on a very regular basis and it's very difficult because we're constantly pulling one of our old mechanics back to train the meter readers. So if we can get away from those meter readers, I think we'll, like most of the other utilities that have done it, been doing it for quite a while, it's pretty much pays for itself. And, uh, in our case, we're not looking to reduce employees, we're trying to avoid adding employees as we add on some substantial, um, areas for the sewer project. And the timing should work out, four to five years on the meter change outs. If we can continue where I think we continue, then that's when we're adding in the new, the new areas. So there won't be a lot of additional, it's a brand new system, so it should work fairly well, but we still have maintenance on those lift stations that'll be added and, and things are still gonna break. So, so you will be adding as part of that expense side, um, or part of that labor. You shouldn't have much expense there, it should be fairly flat at the beginning. And we'll have a brand new plant, so we should see some of those balance out too as far as expenses go.
Thank you. I know this is a stupid question I should have the answer to, but, so we really separate, in the utility department, we really separate out the, the employees that are working on the water side from the employees that are working on the wastewater side, correct?
So we break it out on a percentage basis for the, for the most of them, because the mechanics all do both. Obviously, there's no separation there. But the wastewater operators are for, uh, almost entirely, ninety percent of their time is spent in wastewater.
So there's obviously, you know, while there's a reduction in the water wages, there's obviously a significant increase in wastewater wages. So is, is there one or two new employees on that side?
There, you have no new employees as far as the budget goes. You budgeted for the same number of employees last year with the exception of myself, so I'm the new employee on that. And that's, so the increase in the wastewater side is part of, is kind of a combination. So we filled the positions and if you'll remember, when I got here, you had nobody to fill the wastewater position. So we increased the pay for the wastewater substantially so we could get an employee to be our licensed wastewater operator. So, um, so that position is in there at a higher rate than what we had. Joe is in there, so you're moved entirely into wastewater, ninety percent into wastewater, but you got a ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand dollar offset, so I shouldn't look at the one twenty because there's really a ninety thousand dollar offset? So, okay, that number's really thirty grand, in round numbers.
Okay, yes, so that's, it's not really, uh, yeah, there's no new employees. You have a trainee at the wastewater plant, so that salary is lower than what we had before when we had a second operator. So that number is actually lower, so yes, that's, your net is 30. Even though you're paying one of the operators substantially more, your second one is actually a trainee, not an operator. So, and that's based with an increase in pay to try and keep track of this state mandated dollar an hour increase in minimum wage people. So, so I have a six-year employee that just got promoted to $15 an hour. We have to keep moving him up as I'm going to have to start new people at $15 an hour. So we've got some fairly substantial rate increase, employment increases, but we're not planning on adding new employees, we're just trying to keep the ones we have.
How many certified operators do we currently have?
Two certified operators, and they're both dual certified. Bobby Clem is dual certified water and wastewater and the new hirer, Pedro Rangel, is dual certified water wastewater.
Okay.
So that's, that's it. We do have two of our water employees that are distribution operators, licensed distribution operators, that are starting the course to get their water license. And then we have a trainee in the wastewater to, that's going to start training. We literally did a flop. The one I hired to do that is not working out in that trainee position for that one. He's now a meter reader and the meter reader is very interested in, and had been already going up there to just trying to learn on her own, and so she's going to be the trainee. And, and we've got to make sure that they'll start the courses, they'll start that coursework and we'll know, we'll know before we spend a year whether that's going to work out or not because they've got to pass the chapter tests as they move through the course. And if they can't pass the chapter tests, they're not going to pass the state test.
Okay.
So, but we did have to already make that change because that wasn't going to work at the.
Yeah, just want to make sure we got plenty of redundancy.
Yeah, so. And if you want to go through the wastewater, very similar issues. You know, it's a guess, particularly on chlorine is a 30, about 34, 35% increase right now. DEP stays firm or EPA stays firm on their, on their, part of the process of making chlorine uses asbestos. Doesn't get in it, you know, it doesn't, there's no effect, but anyway. So they're right now on a rule to eliminate that as a process and it's going to be a very expensive process change. So if they don't get a delay or something doesn't change there, that 30% may be 100% in the next year or two increase. But right now, we're, we're just kind of leveled out. We think we're staying at about a 35% increase until something changes. So everybody else has done an eight and a half percent to a 12 and a half percent adder on lab services has increased or hauling costs have increased for the sludge. A lot of that's based on fuel. You know, we think that's, part of that's going to be temporary, but, but the labor side of that is not going to be temporary because they are all in the same situation. They have employees that they're having to artificially give a, you know, 30, 40, 50% raise, so.
So I noticed in the water and the wastewater, a total of about $8,500 of increased fees anticipated due to fuel key adjustments. Is that just getting our employees to properly document what department they're going and getting filled up at?
That is correct.
Unfortunately, Public Works is not going to pick up part of our fuel costs this year.
I'm sorry, okay.
It was the allocation of where it was going with the fuel key and so Public Works was picking up some of our fuel expenses. So that's part of it, is just who uses, who uses it where. The keys all have to be assigned and who uses it where and so.
So I apologize for not knowing this, do we have our, are we using the county facility? Do we have our own facility or are we going to the gate station or we go to the county facility?
County facility.
Okay.
And they issue the keys and we just got to track and make sure that our paperwork and their paperwork are.
Okay.
Tracking, so they did an audit and corrected a couple of errors, so.
So my, my kind of final question on wastewater is, last year we budgeted $93,500 for a piece of equipment that we apparently never bought. What was that, $93,000? Was that, was that this vacuum trailer was in last year's budget or what was that?
I think that was part of the vacuum truck that never, that didn't get purchased. So, and that's, it may not be, it's down three lines, so that's the 98, 270 if you go down into new equipment. So that's kind of where that's, where that's at. I mean, it shows zero, but then now down below it, we have 90,000, so that's kind of a move down. So in the 12% increase, you'll see that, I mean, we have a 12% increase, but we don't have a large capital budget in there moving forward on the wastewater side. But we do have only two payments left in the DEP. So we do anticipate as the DEP loans pay out, that will give us moving forward capital, capital dollars to do things, lift stations and things like that, still in that budget. Because otherwise, we would have no, virtually no capital in the wastewater side.
So Rachel or Kevin, historically anyways, if for the town, water was making money, wastewater wasn't. We were borrowing money from both DEP and ourselves, correct? So are we making transfers to both the water account and DEP?
No, the water count was supplementing the wastewater loans. And so for the last couple of years, wastewater is paying the own loans. So a water count does not supplement anymore.
But did we pay back to water whatever we owed them or did we just call it a wash and move on?
It was a wash, it was, it was nothing ever said to repay for.
Okay, so we didn't track, we didn't really, I mean, I knew we were, I guess since it's all within the utility, we did not have to track the difference, okay?
Right, correct. You want to go down to your capital? You want to go to the wastewater capital expenses?
That's where we just add, that's the 98,000 and the 93,000.
$150,000 in there for meters and lines.
Yes, out of the, so. I did not print that one. So there is, I did propose pulling, we're going to, your, your capital accounts have increased based on, based, basically what's ever been left over at the end of the year. And we will have some money left over at the end of the year, primarily because we had a number of employees that didn't get filled. So my proposal for next year is to take, we do have, out of that capital fund is, there's $150,000 out of that to, for the pipe bursting project and there's $50,000 additional for meters. So it's a total of $150,000, $140,000 for meters, but 40, 50,000, that's coming out of a different fund. It's coming out of your reserve fund, your capital reserve is the proposal. So, that's the $200,000 total that comes out of the, that is proposed to come out of the capital reserve. Y'all approve that as a separate budget.
That's on the expense side.
It's on the expense side, yes.
On the revenue side, the 50,000, we're just, that's on us. I mean, that's the fund balance, whatever. This question is to Joe, the $86,000 for the supposed pipe bursting project, how much of that is going to be covered by the grant?
I think we're just estimating because we don't have any bids back yet. So we were just trying to put a number, maybe more than that, maybe less. But the, the grant is for, I believe it's $700,000.
I'm sorry, what?
I believe the grant was for $700,000, so we.
For pipe bursting?
Yep.
So on this income side, the 86,000 I'm seeing on line 404, 300, is that $86,000, is that coming out of fund balance in or where's, what's that 86,000?
The 86,000 and the 50,000, both is coming out of the fund balance, out of the reserves.
Okay.
And then kind of looking at 55,000 is going to come from system development charges to make up the 200,000.
And in that account.
I guess while we're on that topic, what we've done in the past is when these projects go through, we do the budget amendment to show the income or, you know, the revenue and the expense for, actually for that project. But I haven't got any bids back yet and I don't, I don't know that that project's going to go forward enough to, to budget for it. So I mean, we can do it either way.
So basically, it's a placeholder for that right now?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I think we're kind of expecting a little bit of an overage, so we're kind of putting a placeholder in. And then if the project actually goes through, what Rachel does is then goes and does the budget amendment to show the grant income and then the money spent after you guys approve the project. But at this point in time, I don't know that it's a 100% go.
So the only money we've spent so far is what we've paid Corbett?
Yes, sir.
Is he doing what he needs to do to keep this thing moving along?
Yeah, it's been, the environmental review's been weighted. I think we're just waiting on DEO to give us the review of that and release a fund. And then as soon as I get that, I'll put that project out to bid.
So, Joe, Kevin, tell me anyways, we are also supposed to be making a water agreement with the Camp and Conference Center. I assume if we ever finalize that, then there'll be a budget amendment to show what money would be coming in from, from that and what the expenses of us doing that, since that would also be primarily, I guess, low, low cost loan or grant funding or something?
Yes, I think they're, they're trying to apply for another low cost loan for that project, but I don't know the status on that one. And I, I think there's, there's several agreements with that and honestly, they're all in a folder and I get a little lost, but I, I think we already have an agreement for them to hook up to water. And I have seen a, I've been informed they're working on the plans on that, but I haven't seen a, like a final set.
A discussion for another night, but we need to, you know, we need to hold their feet to the fire on that agreement and, you know, they, they at times have told us things that didn't come to fruition, so.
Yes, sir.
They have not started construction, so I don't anticipate any of the revenue in this year's, in this coming year's budget. So it's unlikely that we'll see any revenue. And if it does, if we do catch in, it's literally going to be towards the tail end of the budget year. So there's nothing in our revenue projections that include the Camp and Conference Center until things actually.
On either water or wastewater?
Huh?
On either water or.
On either wastewater or water, neither one. Because that's, like I said, they haven't started construction, that's going to be a fairly lengthy project and it'll be towards the end of the, I think towards the end of the, if they get everything signed and sealed and actually start construction. So it's going to take some time to build those lines and get everything connected and.
Thank you.
Then that completes utilities.
Yeah. Any other questions, utilities? Thank you.
I want to go back up to the top to the kind of go over the general fund revenue, which covers public works and also recreation. The revenue is pretty much standard from the state of Florida. I'm still waiting on confirmation for two items, which is communities, communication service tax and also for the revenue sharing part. But everything else is pretty much is the revenue that's coming in.
So, if I might, Mr. Mayor, Rachel, I have a question. Have we not, I thought we had already, we have not yet received this current budget year, $110,000 from the county, have we not billed them or why have we not got that yet?
Well, we was waiting on a signed contract and I think it just got signed and submitted to the county to release those funds.
Okay.
So I think at the last meeting is when it was approved to be signed.
Okay, I just want to make sure we get this year's and then we bill them darn quickly for next year's in the first quarter or so, you know, so. And, and I know I had this, I had a very brief conversation with Rachel today. I know that our last meeting, you know, we set, for the, for the sake of certifying the millage, we, we set a maximum rate of three and a half, if I remember correctly.
3.25.
I'm sorry, what?
3.25, 3.25, not three and a half.
Was that last year's rate was 3.25 also? Okay, so last year's millage rate was 3.25 and we certified for publication 3.25. Okay, I apologize. So, good. So the county, the county is probably going to decrease their millage rate by just a little less than 3%. They're at 8.55, they're going to go to 8.3, looks like. So I would suggest, not that that's why we should do this, but I would suggest that instead of us staying at 3.25, that we ought to be looking at decreasing that either by, you know, 0.10 or 0.15, which would be a little over 3% or a little over a 4.5% decrease in the millage rate. And, and I don't want to put words in Rachel's mouth, but she indicated that if we wanted to do that, so that we could continue to slowly decrease the millage like we've done the last three or four years, that we have plenty of fund balance. Even if we don't find any significant savings as we go through this, there's enough fund balance to do that, which would still leave us in excess of three months of what our policy says we had, we should have. Is, is all of that what I just said, at least relatively accurate?
That is correct. If you look on the revenue and you look up to account number 001, 300, dash 000, this current budget, we have projected using $126,000. So to balance this budget, we only needed $39,000. So, but based on the revenue that's coming in with the expenses, we went down.
So I think what you just said is we're going to use less, we're going to use about $90,000 less than we anticipated a year ago.
Correct.
That's what your thought is right now. We don't know obviously until the end of the year, but that's kind of what it's looking like.
Correct.
Okay, so, so whatever fund balance we're going to use this year, we're really going to have theoretically $90,000 more fund balance at the end of the year than we anticipated.
Correct.
Okay. And so I guess I just will say to my fellow council members, I just think it's important that we continue to try to reduce the millage rate and that we ought to go down at least to 3.15 or 3.1 or go down, you know, at least 3 to 4.5% on the millage rate. Our residents, I mean, we're going to have a, we're going to have an increase in utility rates, we're going to have an increase in solid waste rates. The fire assessment, which also hits all of our folks, that rate's going to go up 7%. Or the, the assessment value will go up 7%, maybe not what you pay. So I just think we need to figure out how we can continue to drop the millage down a little bit more.
As long as it doesn't back our departments into a corner, if they can live with that, with the budgets they proposed, I'm fine with that. Everything's going up everywhere, it's a, I don't want to put the town in a bind by lowering it so much that we're coming back halfway through the year looking for more or having a problem covering our costs.
The good thing, our fund balance is substantial.
It's nice to have that, but I hate to burn it. It's nice to have that, but I hate to burn it all up in a.
But, uh, you know, a lot of times, it doesn't do us any good just sitting there.
I understand that, yes. It's nice to have it, though.
Yeah. I don't think we're dropping it that much, are we?
Though.
It, it's not very much, no.
Well, if.
Opposed to that, I just want to make sure that we're not going to create a problem for ourselves down the road.
Yeah, because if you go from 3.25 to 3.15, it's just going to raise the fund balance about another 30,000. So it'd be like 69,000. So it's still be lower than the fund balance for the current year.
And are, are we still adding to that every year?
I'm sorry?
Are we still adding to that every year?
Yes. Well, we decreasing the, well, yes, yes.
Yeah, I think that's important. That we don't, you know, we don't let ourselves get in a bind, but when, if we can, we need to just keep increasing it, so, okay. And I think the, I think the good thing going forward, I mean, I, I understand the millage rate will be applied back to values as of January 1st of this year, but as we go into subsequent years, I mean, we're seeing new homes and new businesses, and we're seeing, you know, valuations go up. And so, if, at least in the short term of the next couple of years, there's no reason to believe, and I, I take your point, Mr. Sepp, we don't want to, we understand costs are going up, but we don't, we just want to keep our millage rate as low as possible that we can provide efficient service in, in, I want to maintain a good fund balance, but there's no reason to have six, five, six, seven months' worth of fund balance either, so. So Eva, we will vote actually on a millage rate on or about September 12th, and then on the 19th, or one, whatever those days are?
Right, your first reading will be the first town council meeting, the 12th, and then you'll the following week.
Okay.
Do your final, um, adoption.
Final week or final, the next month?
September, you'll have your, 12th will be your first reading on that.
Right.
And then that following week, you'll, the 19th is when you'll do your final adoption.
Okay.
It's a week apart from when you first and second year.
Okay. Well, if I could get consensus, why don't we at least, I mean, I, I assume the process is going to be, Mr. Mayor, we're going through these things, we're making some adjustments potentially. Staff will come back to us in the next workshop, or certainly in the official budget hearings, and show us what the revised numbers are. That's the plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so if, if I can get a consensus that let's, let's decrease the millage rate by .10 or .15, then they can come back, they can bring us new numbers, and we can see how that impacts it.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
It's not a big number in the grand scheme of things. I just hate to keep pushing, 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 and running us into, every year, trying to get a little better, and run us into a bind. I mean, even just holding flat would surprise people with the way costs are going across the board, but it's not, one tenth is not a big deal.
We've actually been adding to the fund balance every year, though.
Yeah, and she might, she's putting like 50,000 a year.
I think last year, it was about 50 some, 53,000, I think last year was.
And that's after.
So, e, e, even at that, if, if, if we do what he's asking, and it, it goes to 35, 30, 35,000, we're, we're still, hopefully, we'll still be able to add to that. So.
Sure.
I, I don't think we're hurting ourselves at all. But what it's going to do to our, our residents, I think, is a, is a plus.
Right, I, I'm in agreement. I'd, I'd rather go a little bit lower myself to, you know, .15, maybe.
I mean, I think it's nice if we can.
And for planning purposes, that could be our goal.
So what number are we coming back with?
Well, let's just, if you don't mind, let's just plug in 3.15. And that'll be a little over a 3% reduction. And, and as I recall, that's about what we did last year, and we had been, for the last three or four years, have been on kind of this 3% or 4% reduction in the millage rate. What's going to happen, frankly, is that reduction, even if we reduce the millage rate, with the valuations of property increasing by 11%, we're still going to generate additional revenue. I mean, you can already see, there was a projection to add, you know, 93 thou, you know, $94,000, so we're just probably going to cut that down to $40,000 or $50,000 increase, so.
Is there any other questions on the revenue?
So, explain, if you go down to the very bottom of this page, uh, line 381901. So sanitation, that was last year, or whatever, we, we anticipated transferring money in from that enterprise fund into the general fund?
Well, the sanitation borrowed some money from, um, the, the general fund to buy a truck.
Okay.
And so they was repaying, and that was like a five-year repayment, and they paid it all.
Okay.
So it's no more, um, the obligation is filled.
Very good. And so interestingly, on the line 335180, these tax holidays, is that what's causing a reduction in the half cent? Is this because now there's days from everything, from bookbags to suntan lotion and all that? So, let me ask you, I apologize, let me ask you a question, Rachel. As I go to the next page on line 386100, why have we not budgeted the $110,000 for this year to come in as revenue?
Different line item.
It's in the county's budget, so I know we're supposed to give it.
That moved to a different line item.
Oh.
Based on the chart of accounts, um, that is on 001334715.
Okay, so it's just in a different place?
Yeah, they changed the code on them. Now, on the infrastructure side of it, where the sanitation fulfilled the obligation for the general fund, then they did buy some, borrow some more money for more trucks. So you'll see transfers coming in from sanitation, the 47,000. And again, I'm still waiting for confirmation from the state for the 342,000 revenue coming in on that one. And I'm going to skip the CRA because that has to be, um, looked at separately. We went over that one. So that brings us to, um, the administration budget. Any questions on that? And nothing much changed on here, but we do have the chamber, um, budgeted in there, um, Highlands for the Women's Center, that's a budget in, in, in there.
Did we put, I'm sorry, I'm not, did we put a few dollars in there? Did we make a con, contribution last year to, like, the fireworks fund, and is that in there, or?
That is in there, too. That's in, that's coming up. With recreation, let's see.
So, I know, I know I just don't understand it, but if, if we can go to line 581999, we, we have certain money that we take out of an infrastructure account, which then we, we, we then put into like a, a solid waste thing. I mean, there's, when we're buying a garbage truck and a grapple truck, that's not really coming out of administrative expense. That's just, there's transfers in and out of infrastructure funds to go into solid waste, right?
No, but, and when you say, which account are you looking at, again?
I'm looking at line 5819999, the $550,000 for two trucks.
I think that's another one he's wanting to do.
And we were using, and I guess, and maybe I didn't notice it, that garbage truck, we are really using ACA money or something to buy the garbage truck, right? So is that on the revenue side somewhere?
Yes, that would be, he, he bought a garbage truck, but it's coming out of the infrastructure, where they borrowing the money from. And he's going to pay it back in payments. Well, they bought it already, but they take a payment here. But then the garbage truck that he paid, banned in the new fiscal year, that is with the grant for 500, and I think it's two trucks. That'd be an Allen question.
So the money comes into our, we get COVID money, it comes into our administrative fund, and we transfer that out to sanitation to buy these vehicles. And I know that at least for, I mean, I know at least for the garbage truck, we agreed to do that with the COVID money. I wasn't sure about the grapple truck.
Uh, correct, just the garbage truck, not the grapple truck.
Okay. Has that been ordered already?
Uh, the garbage truck has, yes.
So how long's it going to take to get a garbage truck?
Uh, between December and February.
Okay.
Actually, that's pretty quick.
Yeah.
It's quicker than the pickup truck now.
And I, I guess, Rachel, you know, when I look at administrative expense, and I see administrative regular wages, I mean, it's kind of this, in a way, this false loan number of $75,000, and that's because all of your all's costs are all being divided into various departments, right?
That is correct.
And, and administration is just a small percentage of your all's expense. You're being 20% to utilities and this, and, you know, that's the way it works, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And also the insurance is done the same way, retirement, any payroll taxes associated with that salary is done the same way, same percentage.
Now, we have not, if I could direct everyone's attention to 515 and 515100. We haven't put any money in for planning or, or whatever, and I'm assuming if we make a decision later to either hire an outside consultant, or we're going to have to just do a budget amendment because.
That is correct, yes.
That work isn't going away, we just aren't budgeting for it right now.
Correct.
Okay.
That does need to be factored in one way or another.
Well, and I think, I mean, there could be mul, you know, again, I don't want to get into, there could be multiple ways we could try to do that, you know, from using our new Code Enforcement Guide to making it part of more into legal or whatever, but I just want to remind everyone that we'll end up probably spending still 30, 40 grand there, you know, one way or the others.
Where are you at?
Uh, 515100, uh, 515100, 515000.
All right, that's what I saw, okay.
We were getting a lot of work out of those ladies for 35.
That was a good deal.
And I, and I understand why they can't do it anymore. They are knee-deep, but.
They don't want to sit through our meetings.
Take care of administrations. Um, going straight into, we're going to skip down to Public Works. Page 12.
For we, public works expenses, is that what you're saying?
So, and I don't know whether or not, Rachel, you can answer this, or if it's the chief. The increase for health insurance, life insurance, that's a pretty significant increase, is, I mean, is that, was that a, that level of increase across the border, or is it specific to law enforcement?
Let's see.
Of 47,000-plus odd dollars. I'm sorry, it's line 521023.
In this case, it'll be for this department, yes. He did have some positions that was open.
So, so what are you saying? They, we're, we're budgeting here for, for those open positions. Should they be filled? Is that what you're saying, or?
Yeah, he did have some position that was, um, that was open. And, but it could not be a driver on just his department. Um, there is other factors where, um, myself, Phil, um, other people that works that is in, involved with this, and it could be a part of, a percentage could have changed to make this number bigger as well. But the most biggest factor is that I think he had one or two positions that was open.
Yeah, but in the past, it's been $70,000, and this year, it's going to be $70,000. We budgeted last year $67,000, and this year, we're adding 47. I mean, I just don't understand why, even if he had a position open, why on health and, health and life insurance, it would be up that, that much more.
I will, uh, look into that, that number and have more information for you at the next.
Okay. And Chief, I take it, what, do you want to buy another Bronco or whatever? James, if you're going to talk, please, please come to the mic. So refresher, remember, I'm, is there a nice young man I met? I mean, have, what's the new Code Enforcement gentleman's name?
Joshua.
Okay. And so Code Enforcement now has a budget of $178,000. What else is getting charged to Code Enforcement other than him and a $30,000 vehicle?
I think part of that salary is, uh, is the salaries, which includes a part of my own, and then I think, uh, Ash actually added a little bit of Beverly's, because she was, uh, at one time doing a lot of mailers for him, so they broke a little bit of hers out of, uh, the law enforcement side. And then we have, um, some equipment necessary, like the laptop computers. I think we increased his training a little bit because he is brand new, so he is going to need to absorb a little bit of, uh, training funding. to need to absorb a little bit of training funding. Excuse me. And then, of course, the vehicle, he's, he's currently in a, in a 2013, it's, it's starting to cost more than what it's worth, as far as repairs.
So, historically, what we did was, we had a sworn officer as code enforcement, and so that individual, he could, he or she could do multiple things.
Right.
This gentleman is not a sworn officer, correct?
Right.
So all's, he can really do is code enforcement, or do you have other things he's doing for the police department, other than code enforcement?
Yeah, we're, we're kind of plugging in a bunch of holes from other jobs, such as the crossing guard trainer, so he's kind of picked that up. We also have some planning, education coming his way. A lot of these, a lot of these classes are, I don't know if everybody in their brother wants to be a code enforcement officer right now, but some of those training and the, and the planning are all full. The first one he can get into is around December. But in the meantime, yeah, we are focusing on, as a discussion we've had about planning, kind of filling the gaps there, or doing what he can to assist the town in the planning situation. So he'll be, he'll be doing some of that training, he's got a lot of code enforcement training coming up. He'll be doing the crossing guard assistance, training the new crossing guards and stuff, so that'll take some of the weight off of our administrative staff who have been doing that.
So, we buy, we buy him a new, I mean, I assume the difference between a $30,000 and a $48,000 vehicles are the amount of equipment to properly equip them to be, I mean, he's just got a regular vehicle, but it doesn't have all the bells and whistles or sirens and-
Yeah, it won't need-
You know, plates.
It won't need near the expensive equipment that a law enforcement vehicle has.
Okay. So, when he, when we get a new vehicle, do we then surplus the, the eight or nine-year-old car and sell it to someone for five or six grand or whatever? How, I mean, just refresh my memory, what we did.
Yeah, I've got about two veh-, two or, at least two or three vehicles that are gonna need to be surplus, that we're gonna take off of our fleet, and generally, what we do is we auction them off. There are a few people locally who, who try to obtain our vehicles, because they know that the town takes care of their vehicles, so they're usually pretty quick to try and purchase them, but they, they usually go pretty quick. So, yeah, they're, they'll be taken off.
So we don't send them to the auto auction, and you dispose them local, and you think you're getting better value that way?
Fair, fair, yeah, we're getting a fair value for them. They're not giving away. Usually, by the time a law enforcement vehicle is at the end of life, it is like Sanford and Son, end of life. They have been, they have been tortured to the extreme. I mean, their 12-hour shifts, 15 days a month or more, so they're, they're being put through the rigors.
You are not, you're not anticipating this year, and the upcoming year, doing any significant remodeling, changes, upgrades to the existing police station, right? I didn't see any of that in there. I mean, other than just normal maintenance, you're not doing anything there, right?
Now, we've made some changes to our property and evidence room so far, to try and expand some of her room, which was actually an addition to that room that was used for supplies and stuff. We've made some changes to expand her work area, to make it more efficient, moving some stuff around, so no, we're not, I mean, at best, we may need to put a new coat of paint on our front door, seems to be peeling a little bit, but otherwise, the building in and of itself is still doing really well.
So, coming back up to your budget on line 521-411, what is social media archiving?
That is what we pay to archive our, our Facebook page, and any time that somebody does a public records request, it is all archived, all the way back to the beginning of time.
So do they archive all the, you know, instance, I mean, you're obviously a pretty prolific social media guy. Do they archive all of the stuff that is going out from, not you personally, but from the police department, whether it's on Twitter or otherwise?
Yeah, and it kept, what it, what it does for us, that I cannot do myself, because I, I tried for a year to save that money and archive it all myself, but what these companies can do is, anytime that somebody actually posts comments to our page, that, then it becomes a public record, and if they delete it, then that record is gone. These archiving companies capture, once it's posted to our page, it is captured, and then even if the person deletes it, then I can make a request to Archive Social and say, I would like to get these records, and then that will be included. So we're not missing anything, in the event that we are served with a public records request.
Okay, so let me, while we're talking about archiving, all of our officers have, I believe, in patrol cars, have body cameras or cameras in the car or whatever, is that accurate?
Yes.
Are we archiving that film, or is it kind of on a, what I will call relatively short loop, or how are we archiving either body cameras or car camera footage?
We, we house all that footage in-house on our servers, and then we save according to what the public record timeframe is, whether it be six months, nine months, four years, depending on the case as well. They're put on external hard drives in our property and evidence room, we take it off of our server to keep the server from backing, or clogging up. Once the scheduled date, then we go in and we remove those files from the external hard drives, but we do all that stuff in-house.
So this is, this really has nothing to do with the budget, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. When, when a man or woman comes off their shift, do they, do they download that footage and save it, even if they didn't think anything of import happened, or does it just get saved if there was an incident that they thought was important?
Now, their body cameras, they're only activated if, when the officer initiates them, so in the event that they're dealing with a law enforcement call, they'll activate the body cameras, so those are all downloaded. The video cameras from the cars, yeah, those chips are put in, they download everything that's on that chip, regardless of if they seen anything during their shift, or if they were doing paperwork at the police department, all shipped.
So they just, if they were just patrolling for eight or nine hours and nothing happened, there's still a record from that, that you could go back a month or two later and say, yes, I can look up and see what exactly happened on August the 3rd-
Correct.
-in that car?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to see, thanks.
Now, not in the car, it shoots outside the car.
Right.
I got you.
So it's, it's incumbent upon the officer, when he or she gets out of the car, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's incumbent upon them to activate their camera, and, and they are trained to do that, whether it's, I assume, a traffic stop, or question someone about why they're here or there, but they should, every time they're encountering someone out there, they should be hitting whatever they need to hit to start that up, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if they aren't activating their body camera, then that's a violation of-
Policy.
-your all's policy. Okay, thank you.
I see here, Chief, you budgeted nothing for car seat, toy drive, or bike rodeo, or you're planning on not doing those events, or you just don't plan that way?
No, we, we are pulling back on some of those programs, the bike rodeo, we just don't have the same staff that we once did. We've cycled several of our officers out, the ones, and a lot of our reserve officers have retired, gone away, so it's, it's, it's very difficult to staff one of those. And actual, we are in talks with Sebring Fire Department to possibly take that program over, and take that trailer and everything with it. The car seats, that is, that is a program we're still going to do, but we, we don't purchase them. Generally, those are, are funded through grants or a partnership with the Elks, so we, we generally don't have any money, or we'll do a fundraiser to acquire them, so there's never been any money that we've actually had to spend, as far as taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
So speaking of that, the, the police department has a fund, I believe, that people have made donations to, or you all have, maybe when you're doing CPR lessons or other things, in round numbers, how much is in that fund now?
In our donation account.
I would have to reconcile that count to find out, but I can give you a num-, I can tell you at the next workshop.
Okay.
I see a number here on 521-519, it says $382 and a penny.
Oh, it should be way more than that.
Yeah, that is just for that, that fiscal year, though. Yeah.
And-
It's 2,400 in the previous years, but-
No, I mean, they got a, a fund they've been building up over the years.
And we have a, we have a department of donation accounts, so when we do the concealed carry classes, when we do CPR, we do anything, or people just love us so much that they are, they stop by and donate to the department, then that goes into that donation account, yeah.
I think there's several.
I want to say it was around about 10,000 or so.
I was gonna say, I would, I would expect just 10 or 15,000, right?
Yeah.
And then, basically, that expenditure is pretty much at your discretion?
Yeah, and we-
I don't mean, I don't mean off books, but it's not part of the budgetary process, that's a separate, separate fund.
That is correct.
But at, but at some stage, Rachel, I'm assuming they share that with you, and they document what comes in and what goes out?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, we actually, the one that strike it, they, they put the revenue in, whatever events that they have, the money goes in that account, and we just reconcile it every once in a while, to make sure that everything is, and you agree with it.
Yeah, we keep hands off, except for the, the requisitions.
Yeah. I noticed also, on the income side, some programs that don't look like they're going to happen, is that the same reason, is because of staffing?
I'm sorry, you said some of the programs that aren't happening?
On the, on the revenue side, I noticed that some of the, some of the programs weren't, weren't on there, like the, the training, concealed weapon type training, or, or the self-defense type things that you've had in the past.
Those are at, you know, we don't schedule them as, like, an every Wednesday deal, but it's, as they come along, as people request them, it's not a number that we've budgeted, because we have no idea what, what it's, what it's possibly gonna be.
And some of those are done for free as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, the toy drive, some of the other things, no shave November, some of those things have kind of gone to the wayside, but I just haven't had, have not made the request to remove those line items.
So, Rachel, the other thing that happens with the law enfor-, the police department is, they, they generate revenue from special duty, and then they pay out salaries from special duty. Is that contained in this budget somewhere? Is there a revenue, revenue line for special duty that I just missed, or?
There is no line item for that, because whenever they do special duty, it offset their salaries, so it goes to expense item to offset the expense that the town paid. Is that, that-
So you're saying it's just a complete pass-through, so that it's not like money in, money out?
No, it's, it's a offset. You have, I see 521-015 for PD special detail, and I remember seeing an income line similar to that, but I don't recall if there was any dollars in that income line. I highlighted it on my microscopic screen.
Well, yeah, to your point, the last year, we, I mean, we spent $6,300, but we aren't, but why are we not budgeting for it anymore, when we've done it in the past?
I don't know if that's, is that something scheduled, that you do on a regular basis, or if it's not on a regular basis, it's not normally budgeted?
The only one that we have that's regular is the First Presbyterian Church, and I don't know that we have a line item, because it was, at that time, they'd never said that, you know, at that time, it was kind of like, we want to do it for this amount of months, and then it was, let's do it for a few more months, and then I think it just became a regular thing, without us creating a line item for it, but First Pres is the only reoccurring special detail that we have right now.
So when you all assist with funerals, is that just part of your normal activities to close intersections?
We don't, we don't charge them for that.
Okay.
It's usually 15, 20 minutes tops, and easy for us to do.
So, the code enforcement officer, does he directly report to you, or Phil?
To me.
And James reports to me, so I've got a report to me.
guy, that's possibly a new officer PD.
That's, that money will only be spent in the event that we have another opening, because it was extremely hard to find the, fill, to fill the positions that we had, and what we were finding is, a lot of applicants would want to be sponsored through. So, right now, we're full house, so if we do get that money, that money will sit there until, and somebody moves along, or whatever causes us to have another vacancy, and then that gives us an ability to find a, a positive applicant, and if this is approved, what we will do is develop a policy that states, you know, we put somebody through the academy, they are, you know, to stay with us for a certain amount of years-
Yeah.
-to kind of offset that, so it, it is extremely difficult to get young folks to get into law enforcement, if somebody isn't willing to pay for them.
So, Rachel, I, I have another line that I'd like for you to explain to me, and that is 521-523, operating supplies. So we ran along a couple of years ago at $6,500, so far, we've spent $4,700, we've now budgeted, we've now budgeted 15-plus. What is, why is that number doubling? And I see, it says out here, including town events, I mean, why is that number doubling?
In the past, that, they had the operating supplies, and it only went to the general fund, so it wasn't properly categorized, when all departments benefited from it. So now, this year, I split it out to all departments, based on the number of employees that it's affecting, and what they, what their job duties is. So, in all the departments, their operating supplies kind of went up, they kind of moved those expenses into the right departments.
I apologize, I think what you just said is, they're pay, they are paying a higher, more appropriate share of overall operating expenses, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that is across the board, everybody.
Okay.
Most of my line items should all be pretty much the same as they've been over the years, with exception to a few requests in capital and equipment, such as the law enforcement vehicle. We still need to replace a couple of aging radios that are no longer essentially useful to us, we're having to be forced to move over to an APX radio that cost $8,000. There's no way around that, there's no, there's no cheaper version of a, a radio out there, like it was when we first moved over to the, the 800, so that is a cost that is in there. The computers are needing to, to be upgraded as well, a couple of laptops, so that's, that is about the, the bulk of an increase in our budget, that we can control, I should say.
Well, again, the big, one of the big numbers, and I know Rachel said she was gonna chuck on it, is that 521-023, that $47,000 increase in insurance, and we'll just make sure that-
Okay.
-that we, if you don't mind, so we understand that better.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That brings us to the public works, streets and roads.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Well, if he can do all this stuff for an additional $2,200, I don't even really want- Well, if he can do all this stuff for an additional $2,200, I don't even really want to ask him any real questions.
Don't ask, don't open that box. Where are we going, I'm sorry, public works?
Public works.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were going to street and roads.
Yeah, no, that would be the next page, we wouldn't want to go there, we gotta go several more pages down, so we get confused.
Oh, we're going even deeper then, public works?
Yeah, I think, I ain't seen it yet. Where it says water systems, is that what you're talking about? Is that where it says water systems? Um, page 12, enough numbered.
James, before you go, let me, James?
They got page 12 up there, but it's, um, the 001-
541s. If no one has any further questions, I'm gonna let the chief head out.
I'm good, Chief. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, public works, what we are looking at is streets and roads, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that was way back here.
That was my point, I mean, his budget only goes up $2,200.
Public works a minute ago was-
Everything's trending.
And recreation is also a part of public works.
And so, can we just go to recreation? So, it looks like the big two things are, we're buying another truck, I take it, on line 572-641, truck, and then we are buying, are we replacing some playground equipment? Is that down there at Lake June Park, or where?
Uh, no, it would be the, the inner parks, say Bicentennial, Spruce, and Taylor, Serenity Village.
So, we're buying various pieces to go there, then?
Correct, yeah, that, I think last year, I asked for about 10,000, and then I realized all I could get was one swing set with two bays, so the money does not go far when you're looking-
A swing set costs 10,000?
Yes, sir.
It's crazy.
There, there's governmental-
Yeah.
It's crazy.
I'm sure it has to meet crazy standards for safety and liability, it's probably worth it.
So, uh, so, some of the complaints we've had from citizens was that swings are all that they have, so we're trying to find some new equipment, it's hard to find something within a reasonable budget that kind of fits all age ranges, uh, personally, I'd like to search for grants, uh, my concern was, if we get a grant, it would automatically go to Lake June Park, but, uh-
Yeah.
-if, if we, if we could allocate some to the, uh, they don't look like they're heavily used, but I guarantee after hour, they're full of kids, so.
Can we get help with the Lake June Park, that's kind of a county situation out there as well?
Yeah, Lake, Lake June Park would be under Harry.
Yeah, Lake June Park would be, um, covered in the next section.
That was that extra thing you sent out, right, Phil, that Lake June Park thing? I didn't get to look at that yet.
No, that's, that, that Phil sent out, that's getting ready to redo some parking and all that.
Oh, oh, all right, 'cause we were supposed to look at that to put that in here as well, 'cause it was gonna have an effect on it.
I think, I think, Mr. Williams, your point was, we needed to budget our 15% match for Phase Two of Lake June Point improvements, correct? Is that the email you sent out yesterday or today?
Actually, it was a lot more than 15%, it, the, it came in with the budget, and that's what counsel was, I was gonna put before you, uh, the, the project was 165,000, that was budgeted overall, and I thought our part was 15%, 24, 25 grand, basically.
Yep.
But that needs to be put in this budget somewhere?
It does, if you want to, but the, with the RFP came back, and I thought I had that in there, but the RFP came back, and, and, uh, it was around 105,000, so that's what, the, the county, uh, engineering, or the county agreement that we have to pay, uh, that they won't pay anything more than 140, the total cost of the project come back quite a bit more than that, so, um-
I saw 165 in there a minute ago.
Yeah. Geez, I don't see that, I thought I had the sheet in there.
Notice.
Yeah, this was the budget, the, the lowest bid was-
Oh, okay.
$250,000, okay, and, uh, when the RFP came back, we had budgeted 165, so the town's share of that is going to be 24,431 plus the extra 250,000, plus probably in the engineering, county's gonna pay up to 140 in, in their, in their, in their local agreement.
So, they're not, they're not obligating themselves to 85%, they're obligating themselves to 141 then?
140,000, right.
Which is less than 50%.
That's, that's, that's-
Less than 50%.
So, we would have to come up with another 110,000 dollars to get to 250.
I didn't think council would want to do that, I figured you'd probably be want to at least-
I have a motion, we could change it to pickleball courts, you could get probably six or eight pickleball courts for the money allotted.
No, depends on how the project, how important the project is to you, I mean, uh, it's, it's a pretty project, but I don't know how, how important it is to you.
Cobb must have been very proud of their work, putting in a bid for 550,000 dollars.
Yeah.
I would suggest we just, that we look at that as a, as Mr. Wilson said, either other options, or as a standalone thing later, but I would have been good with putting in 25 grand, I don't know-
I'm good with that, in that, in that range, but if we can come in with a project comparable price that they'll approve, I'm good with the 25, but I don't want to come out of pocket with another 110, actually, we're, it's less than 50% when you figure, if we have to pay the engineering cost, then our match, and then the balance of the, of 110, you know, we're gonna be in it to 150 to their 140.
We, we'd be better off just to buy a few more loads of shell, and-
Yeah.
We are, we are out $4,500 engineering cost, uh, and the Southwest Florida Water Management permit is good for five years, so we, we decided to move back to the project, so-
So, if, if, if we don't do this project, can we substitute it pending there, the same amount that's been allocated, can we substitute?
Well, we'd have to go back to RPAC and, and just cancel the, or go back and, and cancel the agreement that we're in now, and we can go back to RPAC, any way you look at it, we'd have to go back to RPAC.
They've allocated that fu- those funds, though, that's been approved.
140,000.
For a specific project.
For it.
Yeah.
Correct, but any other project that we deem, uh, we know how the thing works, it's kind of like, like, your turn, your turn, your turn, with the municipalities, with the amount of money that they have on hand, kind of our turn, and-
I think, to your point, we'd probably better to go, if we want to substitute, come up with a project and go to them and say, you know, the bids came back, and it's, it was too expensive, we'd rather do this, and we, since you kind of earmarked 140 for us, we'd like for you to-
That would be my suggestion, I hate to lose that money, when, there, there's definitely other needs that we could apply it to, and I think that would be-
But these, but these parks that he's talking about, um, uh, they need, they need attention, they are, they are in, in a lot of disrepair, and these are not people that can put their families in the, in the car and take them to, you know, uh, everybody goes to the movies type thing, get popcorn, you know, these, these folks-
But this money is different.
I know it's, I know it's different, but I'm saying, that if we put all this attention into this, this project, which is, you know, one of these beautiful, beautiful places, and now, we don't pay any attention to the other locations that really need some renovation, we need to pay attention to both, not with the same money, I understand, but we need to pay attention to both.
And, and I'm not sure the rules, whether it's got to be a county, a joint maintain project, or it can be in a standalone municipality, I'm not certain of that.
Yeah, and it, and it probably can't, to be honest with you, it probably can't. From a budget standpoint, I, I don't want to lose that, that line item for that, but what is it, Bicentennial Park and the one in Lake Rich Arv, that really are in disrepair.
But in regards to Allen's budget, basically, streets and roads is a wash, $2,200, parks and recreation, basically, all the increase is because of three items. Playground equipment, a lawnmower, and, and a truck.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, if we believe we need another vehicle, and we need another lawnmower, apparently, and-
Yes, I, I put in for, uh, one vehicle under streets and one under recre- Uh, the one I put in for last year, uh, Ford canceled 300 of the vehicles out of 306 that were ordered, so we weren't even able to get that one from Allen J, uh, so instead of coming back and asking for more money for a different vehicle, I, I just, uh, reallocated that towards, uh, lawnmowers that we needed, because at the time, we didn't have enough personnel to fill the trucks, but now we have full pell- personnel, and we're doing everything we can to even start these trucks in the morning.
So, Rachel, what I just noticed, I apologize if I didn't notice earlier, I'll bring your attention to line 541-023, there, there's a $37,500 decrease in health and life insurance, so I guess, I mean, it goes back to, why is that one going down so dramatically, and the police department going, I mean, if you don't mind looking into why, to my simple brain, it just doesn't make sense that this one's going down dramatically, and the police one's going up dramatically.
No, it might be reallocation, it might just be-
Unless it's a reallocation.
Okay, I'll bring that back at the next workshop. Police insurance is higher, it's, they're up.
I'm good, if you all are.
I'm good. Well, that brings us to cultural services, which is Harry's department.
Want to do sanitation while I'm here?
Oh, okay. Um, Allen asked to go ahead and do sanitations while he's up here, so we're jumping down to sanitation.
Okay, let's see if we can find it.
Is that deeper?
On the string is page 21.
Give me a line item, I can look at it better online.
409, 534.
Like the next to last page now.
Of course it would be.
When I'm looking at sanitation revenue, obviously, we talked about an increase in residential rates, correct?
Yes.
Just refresh my memory, where are we today on residential rates, and where are we going to in the next fiscal year?
Um, for the commercial side of it, um, when we did the, the rates last year, it kind of more so affected this budget than it did last year's budget, so, um, it is bringing the revenue up some, um, for the tax roll part of, which is the commercial side of it, um, I got it in red because, um, we gotta still confirm that with the, what we sent to the tax roll, um, but the, um, the rate increase itself, it, it really significant helping this department.
So, but I mean, under residential, we're increasing our revenue stream by 14%, so were we charging like 120, and are we going, I mean, we're, what, what was the residential rate, what is the residential rate this year, last year?
220.
I'm sorry, what?
220.
220, and what are we going to?
It's still 220.
Still 220.
We're not doing an increase, we did the increase last year.
Correct.
Okay, so, how, where is the extra $24,000 coming from in residential revenue?
Yeah, it's in red because still, you gotta confirm, whatever we send to tax roll, based on the number of, um, location that we send to get billed for commercial, that number is still kind of pending. But a 24,000 on, um, for residential, 220 for every household of garbage, so there is some households that have two locations, because they have maybe a garage, they probably have a, um, a residential house, and they want trash service at both of these locations, so we still trying to make sure that we got all the containers, um, counted, to make sure we send them to tax roll correctly, but-
But, but that would mean an increase of 110 new accounts, I mean, is it realistic to think there's gonna be 110 new accounts?
I'm not sure about a hu- 110.
Not 110, this number is, like I said, it's, it's still pending, it's not, um-
I mean, 110 times 220 is basically 24 grand, that's how, I mean, that's the map I just did, I mean, I just-
We, we found a lot of anomalies as we were distributing cans, uh, I don't know that it was quite that many, but there are, uh, quite a few that are, have multiple, they're not coded the way they should be, uh, there's, there's people renting out their garages, I don't know whether they're Airbnbs or what they're doing, but it's just labeled as single family, but they're, that they have residence there, even though there's no separate address.
I just want to make sure we're being realistic, because if what we've, if what we've collected so far for this year is 133,500 dollars, and I'm assuming that's all on everyone's tax bill, so there shouldn't be much more, if any, coming in, and then after June the 30th, and now we're increasing that pro- that projection by $63,000, I just want to make sure we have a realistic number, I know there'll be a few new, but, I mean, now, if you do, if you divide 63,000 by 220, that's, if I'm doing it right, that's almost 300 new accounts, I just want to make sure we have the right number in here.
Yeah, we have not done the tax roll, um-
Okay.
-yet, so this number is still, is, is really not, um, a permanent number, it's temporary.
I guess, and I've said this in the past, I just want to make sure that we're providing, we're continuing to upgrade the level of service we're providing, and I know we were, the sanitation, we were, we had it in a deficit for a while, and I know that you all on the commercial side and the residential got it corrected, I just want to make sure that as we move along, if we're maintaining the same rate per residence, great, that's wonderful, but I would rather, I guess, well, I'd ra- I'd rather go up five or 10 bucks a year than, than all of a sudden, three years from now, go, oh goodness, we gotta go up $30, or $50, or something like that, you know, so, and I think that's what we talked about last year as well. I just want to make sure that it's, that we're being realistic, that in 221, we brought in 121,000, this year, we brought in 133.5, and we budgeted 172, I, I mean, I, I, I mean, you, it's all in the tax bill, so there can't be a whole lot of new money coming in after June 30th, for residential, I mean.
Yeah, it's not based on the revenue, it's based on the locations, is what we looking at. Yeah, it's not based on the revenue, it's based on the locations is what we looking at. And when they did annexations about two years ago, it takes almost that before you actually go and be on the town, allocated to the town jurisdiction. So, I'm thinking last year, like 24 or something that we kind of battled with the county on. And then they, we couldn't put it into the town jurisdiction at the time. So, I'm thinking some of that has something to do with that, but based on the number that counted last, that was a number. But I wanted to confirm to put it on, whatever we sent to tax roll is what that number would be.
I'm with you, Ray, it's gonna be hard to keep that number the same with costs going up, fuel. There's a, we're gonna have to have this discussion again down the road.
And, you know, and the interesting, the good or bad thing about solid waste is, can only have that conversation once a year, right now. Because once those tax bills, I mean, we're locked in. I mean, anything else in the world, if we, even water or wastewater, we could on any given Monday night increase it. But we are locked in once we put it on the things.
I see this, right, the fuel has gone up $16,000 just for the fuel. And we're, we haven't increased prices since last year. So, we're gonna have to bump it up some to at least even cover that.
I just want to make sure our revenue number, I mean, that was what stuck out to me, was that the revenue number was projecting to be $63,000 more than what we took in this year. And I just want to make sure that that was a realistic number. Because otherwise, we're gonna be in a deficit again. I would just, Rachel and Alan, I just, I would encourage you all to just look at that number and make sure we understand, I mean, because garbage, solid waste, residential should be some multiple of $220, right?
Right, that is correct.
A lot of cost is going up, but I was told that the landfill fees were gonna remain the same this coming year. I budgeted, I believe, around 170,000, I'm not looking directly at it, but that's-
That's at both Highlands County and Okeechobee?
Yeah, that's one, that's the total one we split between the two, yes.
I mean, your overall sanitation expenses increases basically the cost of two trucks.
Correct.
Everything else is basically tracking plus or minus other than the two trucks.
The only other increase that might look significant is the purchase of dumpsters. We put in an order, I don't remember, back in May or April, and it's still up in the air whether we're gonna receive them in September or October or November. So, that money may not be used this year because of it not being received until after October. So, that's why it might look like double, because I'm gonna need to be able to purchase more next year, plus pay for the ones that we ordered this year.
I know I asked the question, the garbage, the garbage truck, that $336,000, that's coming out of the COVID money, I mean, that's paying for that.
Correct.
The grapple truck, the 100, let's just call it $200,000 grapple truck, that is money that we've got to come up with over some period of time out of the solid waste assessments.
Correct. Correct.
Okay. And does that grapple truck primarily get utilized in the residential sector? Or is it, is it really multipurpose?
Multipurpose, depending on, pretty much just depending on the day.
Okay.
But that's replacing a 2,000 sterling.
Yeah, I'm not, I mean, we need to get it, I understand that.
Yeah.
I also want to make sure that, and I mean, I know you are, but I just want to make sure that we are... I know we have some agreements with some specific neighborhoods. I just want to make sure also that people aren't what I'm gonna call abusing that system and we aren't picking up, I mean, have you been able to curtail that to a large degree?
Yes, sir, we've been pink tagging, basically placing notices out, anything that is roughly a half a truckload or more. We've been putting the tag out, I believe around $165 is for the truckload. And it's been, it's been working great.
Okay, so if someone just like empties out their house, they're moving, and they just pile all the stuff out of the street, then you're billing them. And for the most part, we've been able to collect from somebody to haul that stuff off, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But it's mainly used on vegetative?
Two days a week, it's mostly used on vegetation. And then, two to three other days a week, it's used to pretty much follow up behind the garbage truck, anything that's too large.
Okay, so it is used for bulk collection then?
And also, if there's-
An overflow?
Commercial buildings, sometimes they do renovations, things like that. Or bulk items that we don't want in our dumpsters, things that would damage them, we're, we also collect from that and charge appropriately.
Just again, from here, if people have white goods, are they supposed to call you and say, I'm going to put out a refrigerator or washing machine, or how does that work?
They don't, we encourage it, it's not really necessary because we're kind of out there patrolling the roads every day anyway.
Okay.
But, yeah, we do have multiple citizens that let us know whether they want it picked up soon rather than later, they'll let us know an exact day that they're gonna be placing it out. But anything that, during the residential route, our driver will just call whoever is in the claw truck at the time and let them know that there's bulk items out there and to make sure you go down that road.
I know I should know this, but are you familiar with what the county's residential rate is gonna be this year?
Uh, no, I don't.
I don't.
They were going up though.
Huh?
They were going up.
Absolutely, I mean, I guess, I would just ask that you all please, let's check that residential number, make sure that's a realistic number. And number two, let's see what the county's rate is, because we are still providing a much higher level of service than they are. And I just want us to, you know, I'm not suggesting we shouldn't try to take in the amount you said for residential, but we may need to, we may need to come up off a 220 and get a 225 or 230 or something in order to get there. I just, I have a hard time believing we're gonna pick up a couple hundred new customers on the residential side.
And we're gonna do everything we can to keep the quality of service up, even when we do get the automated truck. Whether we just follow up automatically behind that truck with the claw truck, making sure everything's picked up, or if we set a certain days of the month, kind of like the county does, we'll still make sure everything is picked up.
So, do all the businesses in town, they have to use the town's dumpster service other than construction, correct?
Correct, yeah, we, no, no construction equipment, not even, not even for residential. But, yeah, every commercial unit has to utilize the town's garbage, even if they, there are some anomalies, like that have trash compactors, I want to say like Walgreens. They still pay the minimum of $30 whether they use our services or not. But everyone else that requires a dumpster pays. And we keep track of how much they generate. If it's overflowing multiple times in a row, then we increase the days or increase the size.
There are some large millers, air conditioning, they, we don't have a dumpster that big that can accommodate their stuff, so.
I'm running into that with my business. I don't use my dumpsters empty, month after month after month, because I can't, with the cover over it, the stuff won't come out of it. When I put my trash in, it locks in there.
Yeah.
So, I actually have an excavation point construction dumpster, and I'm wasting money, the dumpster's not being used right now.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of a catch 22 with that one.
Yeah, that's similar to Marlin Marble. We constantly tell them to leave bulk items out of there, but it's, honestly, I would prefer to make them just use a construction dumpster and pull out of even supplying them, because it's destroying our dumpsters and our trucks because of the marble and uncrust cabinets, things like that. They literally damage the blades of our garbage trucks. There's, I think-
And some heavy stuff, I imagine, going to landfill.
But, yeah, I mean, they still utilize us, but it's a, it's a, it's a constant battle with them.
So, do we have the ability to do roll offs like the construction ones do or not?
No, that was something I believe Joe was looking into at one time when they were talking about getting a roll off to haul sludge. But I don't think that ever went to fruition, so, no, we're not capable of that.
I mean, we don't have a truck that could transport a roll off then?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's another 180 grand.
Yeah.
And then each roll off is about 35,000 a pop, new.
Well, if you guys would please just look at the residential revenue thing and go from there, thank you, I'm done.
While, while we're speaking of that, I've put it in the director's report several times. The reason we haven't been able to distribute extra cans to the 27 residents who have requested them, we're still waiting on the legal language, whether it is to say that the can belongs to the town or it must remain with the property, whether it's the owners and they can leave town with it. We need the proper language written up so we can start delivering these extra cans that people are requesting.
So, once you get that worked out, how many, do you have a few more cans that people could request still?
We have 50 total. I want to say the last number I saw was roughly 27 were accounted for. And there is money in the budget to get, the minimum order is 100 cans. So, there's enough in there for at least another 100 cans.
So, how much are you charging for the next can?
That was never set in stone, but we had it at $70. And then that's the thing, do you want it to be a $70 one-time fee and they get to generate twice as much trash forever? Do you want it to be an extra fee yearly? That's, that's all up for discussion.
It's gotta be a yearly fee, I mean, you're, you're contributing more trash. The can would be a one-time cost thing, I would assume, but you're gonna have to charge more. The fact that they're gonna have double the refuse is costing money in tipping fees.
But stuff will just sit by the edge of the can though, Charlie. I mean, if it doesn't fit in the can, it still goes to the road.
And that's-
I have a constituent I'm very close to, and she, she'll by God put stuff out there. I mean, it's, she doesn't care if it fits in the can or not.
Yeah. The price could still be negotiable, I mean, if you wanted to make it an extra $30, $40. You know?
Okay, thank you.
And before I leave, if you wanted to knock out cemetery, I've got that in front of me as well.
I think that's near the back, if I remember a cemetery. So, I take it from looking at the revenue side of this that, by gosh, people just aren't getting buried as much, we're just not selling that many lots.
We've been quite busy the past two years.
Well, I just see you're projecting less than half for this year than what you were a year or two ago from cemetery lots.
Some of those were outstanding events, where it's like the Smoke family bought 44 plots. There's things like that that we can't expect yearly. But we've had a lot of individuals buy one to two plots. We haven't had any, you know, bulk purchases from, say, one individual in a while.
Well, I mean, I guess I just, my point was in 2021, we budgeted $33,000. This year, we've already sold $24,300. So, why if we sold already in the first three quarters, $24,300, are we only projecting to sell $15,000 worth next year?
That $15,000 has always been like a traditional number we put in there. And so, then, when I go back to do the budget amendment for the year to close it out, we just bring it to actual.
You're just telling me you don't want to get too, you don't want to get too, too aggressive on the revenue numbers?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, he also said the Smoke family bought 44.
Yeah, but that was 10 years ago or whatever, that wasn't last year. I mean, I don't know if it was 10 years ago, it was eight or nine years ago.
We've sold eight plots just this week, so, I mean, it's, it's been-
Baby boomers.
I actually made a spreadsheet at one time, and I can tell you how often, monthly, we are more likely to get purchases.
I mean, I know it doesn't make any difference, we're moving $44, $4300 of fund balance in. And Rachel, what you're saying is, we're never gonna use, we probably will never use that fund balance because next year, we'll end up selling $25,000 worth of lots and we won't. So, I shouldn't obsess over the projection numbers because we just don't know who's gonna buy what.
No, that is correct.
I mean, it used to be, my perception was years ago, the cemetery was losing money every single year, but this makes it look like we're okay?
Yes.
And maybe it's just a reallocation of personnel cost or whatever, but-
Yeah, the cemetery used to have a fund balance like 13,000, 8,000, and now it's up to 108,000.
The perpetual care fund?
Perpetual.
The operating-
Oh, the operating fund balance?
For cemetery.
Oh, okay.
What's the perpetual fund balance?
That's about 350,000.
Okay.
And that's after the purchase of the additional property?
That was what's the COVID money.
I don't think we use cemetery money to buy that.
Okay.
Did we? We just used general fund money to buy that orange grave, right?
No, the cemetery purchased that property.
Okay, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, okay.
Yeah, I've got-
Shouldn't that be reimbursed with the COVID's money we were supposed to receive? It's the property around the cemetery, I thought was purchased with COVID money.
Well, I think what, I mean, I presume what's gonna happen is someday when we start to use that for something other, when we start to use portions of it for something other than cemetery, then it'll, that money will flow back in and be put into the cemetery fund balance if we really spend... I didn't know we were gonna-
On, on average, we have not total purchases, but total burials, roughly 50 to 60 every year. And 2020 was 60, 2021 was 57, which is right on par as average. The highest years were in the early 90s, where we had over 80 burials. I'm assuming after a hurricane or something.
So, how, I mean, again, I know this is all accounting magic, but we obviously do not charge very many wages against the cemetery then?
No, because I think Alan, his regular staff with streets and roads, they go out there and do-
Yeah, at least, at least every Wednesday, they go out there and maintain the grounds. Occasionally, they spend a couple extra days a month to go out there and spray herbicide. But generally, we can mow the entire thing in one day, as long as we have at least four or five guys out there.
So, I take it, when I look down on this line, Alan, 58312, I think we talked about this, we're gonna take a portion, you're gonna, you're gonna take a portion of what I'm gonna call the low ones or the flat ones-
Correct.
And move more of those into the more traditional monument area, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They don't, they don't sell as often, they're only $200 cheaper, but people tend to- Yes, sir. Yes. They don't, they don't sell as often. They're only two hundred dollars cheaper, but people tend to.
Want a monument?
Yeah, they want an upright monument, not a flush with the ground monument. So I'm actually gonna skip two blocks, which is over eighty eight feet and then start uprights uh, for about two or three blocks. So basically that would fall even with the distance we've gone along the fence lines. Uh, what we're gonna do is go out there and pretty much metal detect, pull all the pins that are there because they're set at three point six by ten. And then we're gonna give those pins to the surveyor and they're gonna re, put them in the ground where they should be at four foot by eleven foot. So it fits a traditional size so they can have the upright stones.
So, I mean, I don't even know if Greg was here then, but Charlie, remind my, a couple of years ago, we talked about going out there and building a new building and even having a restroom and blah, blah, blah. And have we just kind of, I see we have some building repair, but have we just kind of abandoned the idea of kind of going to the back and building something, a new shed or whatever?
That was Mr. Waldron's project and when he left, I think it kind of left with him because we didn't hear anything about it after that.
Yeah.
And it was about the same time we picked up this building and he had talked about using the little shed around back. And we entertained him and came up with a price and he left right in the middle of all that before we had a chance to settle it out. So that falls on you now, Alan. If you think you could use something there, we can discuss that.
I believe we could, but I don't think there's any immediate rush to do that. I mean, unless you wanna do it obviously before prices keep skyrocketing.
I think we were getting carried away with it because we were trying to put bathrooms and water fountains and air conditioning and all kinds of stuff to accommodate people who were going out there. And it was, it just put us in a bad position. It was too hard to do that and it creates another building for us to have to maintain and keep up with.
Exactly.
Lock and unlock every day.
Yeah, then we'd have to send employees out there to lock, unlock on the weekends, overnight, things at all, evenings.
Most folks who go there know what to expect when they go there. They've been doing it for eighty years and there's no surprises out there.
So have, have we had the reason to, I mean, in other words, have, when we bought the additional property from the rentals, part of the deal was they left a well and a motor and power service. I mean, are we, I know we probably haven't hooked up to it yet, but is that all functional? Is there any reason to use it as an irrigation source versus what we're at now?
Yes, it will help in the future because pretty much where the fence lines, where all the monuments stop, that's also where the irrigation stops, which is another reason I want to utilize the, the inner flat area because it's all irrigated. Otherwise we would have to create an entire new system and I don't think it would be feasible to go from the same turbine that's there. But when we do have to move to the, say, eastern portion, we can utilize that, that well that was left behind and kind of.
There's two wells.
Back. Yeah. Yeah, there's, yeah, there is two wells.
As I remember, there was one diesel motor and one electric motor and I don't know if he left the diesel motor or not. We told him he could take the diesel and leave the electric. I don't know what they, but I think the last time I was out there, the diesel motor was still there, so.
Yeah, I believe they're both there still, but.
Especially if the electricity's still hooked up. I'd have you, I mean, I'd tell you to go out there and just run it every once in a while and just for a minute or two.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's probably not practical to run a pump that big for what you're wanting to do there. I would think you're better to put in a series of five horsepower smirpsable pumps around that are completely automatic.
Yeah.
Those electric pumps are very expensive to operate and maintain.
Yeah.
In my experience in the groves anyway.
And it is, I don't remember exactly what horsepower it is, but it is very small scale compared to the one we have.
I believe it's a thirty horse.
I, I don't care. I just, I just wanna make sure we're still.
Yeah, the only reason we don't run it right now is because all, all that got disced. So I don't really know where the water would come up at if we did run it.
Well, we don't, we don't have the service hooked up, do we?
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, that's true. The, the service is probably cut too, yeah.
The power service isn't hooked up? Oh, I thought it was.
It was in their account. Once the account was, when it was sold, they.
Oh, that's true. Okay. Okay, forget all that. Never mind.
You gotta get the meter and all that.
I just presumed it was a relatively shallow screen well with a small motor on it, you know?
Yeah, the, the electric one is, is fairly small. Our turbine's like a thirty, but that, that, that one's only a hundred and twenty volt. I believe it's. And as far as pavement extension, I was hoping to at least repair a little bit what's there and actually go up to the new mausoleum. Because we have handicap ramps, but it's just shell rock and grass leading up to them. So I wanted to make sure we could, not only for handicap purposes, but also we have that the casket lift that we have to be able to maneuver out there when someone is above the second row.
That road gets a little potty too. There's a lot of potholes in that road.
Yeah.
Then you get a little rain and boy, you got mud.
Yeah. Otherwise, the only other significant increases are the, the price of herbicide pretty much doubled. So it's, it's been raised in every account.
Not to bring anything up, but you know, several, many years back, we had some trouble with people who objected us to do, objected to us doing some herbiciding. Has anyone expressed any concerns about that in particular there in the baby land area or anything?
There are three people that specifically requested that we stay away from those areas uh, just because they want to maintain it themselves. And I believe one of our guys might have oversprayed once and but they're, the guys know to stay away from those specific three. Yeah, I think one was just the hickey area because it's possible that our herbicide might have killed one of the new trees that they planted. But he's, he's.
Even though they're not supposed to plant anything out there?
Well, that, I kinda allowed that because it was completely against the northern fence line and we do have trees along that area. So technically it's in the easement.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so we got two budgets left and that's for horticulture. It's up in the general fund. Cultural services and horticulture. And that'd be a zero, zero, one, five, seven, two, sequence of numbers.
Excuse me. So my question is, Harry, I see a new vehicle. Do I take it that last year we budgeted a bunch for a vehicle and now we didn't buy it or?
No, last year we bought the tractor.
So what do we, so we're buying a utility, okay, we're buying a gator or a mule or something for fifteen grand. Okay. And I take it, Phil, to your point, this line, five, seven, three, six hundred, five, three, six, five, three, six hundred, five, seven, three, six hundred. That line would come out if we don't wanna do phase two, correct?
Correct. That's why I gave that to council ahead of time so you could kind of think about that.
So I, so I apologize. I'd. Okay, so there's not a budget increase or decrease because it was in last year's budget as well?
Yes.
And so technically this budget would go down by a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. And that, that alone was what was the big increase from previous budgets was, was that? Okay. Sorry, I'm a little slow in making the numbers work. And I guess I'll ask my fellow council member that. I think we agreed earlier by consensus to look at other options and not put ourselves on the hook for a hundred and ten or twelve thousand dollars for that project, right?
Yes. That's what I'm assuming.
Okay.
You can, you can let me know at the council meeting because it's gonna be on that agenda. When y'all can make a motion and decide what to do as far as negotiating with the county.
Well, I think that I would encourage, I would encourage Charlie to have a conversation with you, Phil. And instead of us on August the eighth saying we don't want the money, that we formulate a new request for something before we say we don't want that. I just don't wanna have it, you know, kind of go back into their pot and get used up somewhere else. I'd rather say, we don't wanna, we don't wanna you to spend the money on this, but we'd rather do that at this park and, and and go to them with a request. So I would encourage us not to say no to it on August the eighth. I'd wait till we had a plan of what we wanted to do, if that's okay with everybody.
Sure.
Are we tentative leaving it in the budget as is or are we removing it until a later date?
I think we're, I think we're gonna leave it in for the next month, but I think I would put a big ass asterisk next to it because I imagine we're gonna wanna take it out prior to final adoption on September nineteenth. Well, maybe not. We may wanna just leave it in there and then we go into the next year and come up with another project. I mean.
You can have one RPAC project go in at all times, so.
Well, this is an approved one.
So who, who are our RPAC representatives? Harry and Phil?
Harry. Eva.
Harry and who?
Eva's an alternate.
I'm an alternate.
Okay.
But Harry is.
I got off because I couldn't discuss anything with anybody, so. Sunshine violation with Bill Brantley. I could never discuss anything with him.
Well, Harry, I would encourage you to have a conversation with Mr. Wilson and you and Charlie and maybe Phil. Talk about how to formulate or do, figure out exploratory numbers for something else there and let's don't.
I think I can get some numbers from somebody that will get us relatively close.
Okay.
The only, and that's depending on citing it. If we're gonna cite it there, it would be neat, need to be relatively close to the restrooms where you have those facilities. You don't have the expense of putting those in. They're existing. You could put them at the school board, but that may, with the bathrooms by the tennis courts, but that creates a whole nother can of worms. So probably the easiest site, I believe, and I can get, with Harry, we can go out there and look, is that the footprint's relatively small.
Go down that lowest level there behind the bathroom area.
Right. There's room in there.
By the playground.
Because four courts to six courts, we don't, well, six courts would take up the space of two conventional tennis courts. That's it.
Is there a lot of traffic with that? Because then you'd need to fix the drive anyway.
Oh, it, it would, it would be used heavily and it'd probably need to be lighted because it's obviously easier to pull or cooler at this time of year in the, in the summertime. Summertime it'd be used daily, but I'm here to tell, since I've personally got involved in it, I literally know hundreds of people that are wanting, there's no places to play. There's Tanglewood, Sun and Lakes North. There's a couple courts down at Sun and Lakes South.
Spring Lake is supposed to be building a big one out there.
Pardon me?
Spring Lake is supposed to be building a big one.
Spring Lake's gonna be building one. I understand the county's building one in Sebring at Charlie Brown Park. But there's none here in Lake Placid. Most of them are out of this area.
Which means RPAC oughta look favorably on it.
One would think.
Right.
And from what I understand, uh, pickleball is high on the mind of most of the commissioners. They've all been presented presentations by a lot of people in the community here in the last several months.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I've been to some meetings and it was like, it was like, half the people in the meetings were like pickleball people, you know?
Yeah.
And if I'm RPAC, I'm thinking that is more of a recreational thing than building a parking lot is.
I think we have a strong case to substitute it. Obviously it's not our decision. We'd have to run that by them. It's, it's.
They don't substitute. You have to come up with a whole new application.
No, I understand, but we, we know we've already been approved for this funding. So yeah, technically, yes, you're absolutely right. We'd have to come up a new thing, but that money's already approved. If, if the dollar amount were in the same amount that they've already allocated, I don't see why they'd have a big heartburn with it, you know?
At the last RPAC.
There's an RPAC meeting coming up. I'll have to look and see what the date is.
I think they had considerably more.
If you don't get it in by then, then it's three months.
I mean, so I mean, you, you don't have to limit yourself to a hundred and forty.
Well, I mean, realistically, mo- most communities, minimum eight courts is what, what's usable for any kind of tournaments or anything to draw people and everything, so.
We'll start looking at some plans and maybe.
The good thing about it is, you know, you can fit three to four, I'm told, courts on the conventional tennis courts. I saw, you know, if you could get six to eight courts with, and the lights are gonna be a little bit more money and of course you need the fencing and stuff, but.
You've been to these courts?
Pardon me?
Do they charge the other courts to play? Like we have a user fee?
Uh, well, Sun and Lakes, there's a, it, it's part of their, um, the Sun and Lakes district. So I'm a non-member, so I have to pay a non-member rate. And I believe it's like a hundred and seventy five, two hundred dollars annually for the racket court.
Like all the other sports teams and stuff out there, they have to pay a twenty dollar per person.
I don't think that'll.
Yeah, I'd set up it as a revenue stream for me. And I said, well, we've done that. We've done that for O and M.
Yeah.
And I think the people that are playing pickleball, if you said, I'm making it up, but if you said you gotta pay twenty, twenty five bucks a year to play there.
You'd have hundreds sign up like that.
Yeah, there wouldn't even blink.
No. No. Twenty five bucks a year, I, I don't think anyone would hesitate.
I have issues with the senior league men paying their user fees. I was just wondering if it's gonna be the same people? Are they gonna have the same problem?
I'm, I'm sorry, what?
The senior baseball league, I have issues getting them to pay their user fee.
Now, pickle people, that's a whole different class.
Different.
I don't think that, that group would be able to play pickleball.
What's that?
I don't think that group would be able to play picker ball.
Actually, actually, some of my pickleball friends play in that leagues, in those leagues.
The hard, the hard thing is coming up with a good predictive estimate for, to present the RPAC on the budgets. Like this one here, and I've heard Joe say numerous times, you don't know until you go out for RFP what it's actually gonna cost.
Right.
Paulson came up with this figure in twenty twenty one and, and, you know, with his figures on the late June phase two and.
What, what I recommend is, is get in touch with Spring Lake. They're getting ready to build one. Someone designed it. Someone's doing it. They know how much it costs. That'd be an easy place to start.
I can go back to my emails and get that.
Yeah, Chris Schumaker, I think, has run Spring and Lake now, doesn't he? I mean, you could get in touch with Chris Schumaker and.
But I mean, there's a lot of younger people that are getting into it as well, so.
And we could piggyback on Spring Lakes if, I mean, if they've already got a plan in place. I'm wondering if they didn't go through RPAC. They did.
Did they?
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Be a perfect piggyback. May not even have to go out for RFP. Where everything's gone up since then, so you probably won't.
That's been let for, that one's been awarded, so.
All right. services and horticulture, and when you get to the bottom, it says that those two things are going up $60,000, but I just don't see where that $60,000 increase is since cultural services is down 18 and horticulture is down 17. Where's the $60,000 increase?
That includes part of recreation, which is on it.
I'm sorry, includes what?
Total parks and recreation expenses, because recreation kind of broke up in different parts. So the $725,000, that includes horticultural, recreation services, and recreation, so.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, there's a whole separate set of sheets on recreation? I thought that was Alan's deal.
Yeah, it's in recreation. He got some vehicles and stuff in there.
Oh, we gotta go back a page. I apologize. I apologize.
You gotta go back two pages.
So it's the big, it's the big spender.
Yeah, it's right here. There you go.
Okay, so the, the big deal was, when we talked about it with Alan, was it was the $70,000 worth of playground equipments, truck, and a mower. Okay, I just, I was trying to figure out how it went up when it wasn't.
Yeah.
And for Alan, I got an email today about some grants for playground equipment with up to 100% match. I sent, I forwarded you the email.
I remember when, many, many years ago, when I started in council, the general fund guys and the utility guys wouldn't let, like each other use each other's equipment. I'm assuming we're doing a better job of like sharing stuff and lawn mowers and all that. I remember very distinctly, they wouldn't let, use a push mower to mail, you know, mow underneath the water tank or something, you know? And so, I assume you guys can go to each other and get stuff as you need it and check it out and.
So that did include, conclude all the departments. So we got them all?
I know on the health and insurance, you're having to, you haven't got the renewal yet, so you're having to approximate, but I would just, as Ray pointed out, and the police, several of them, there's, some vary from 10 to 11 and some are up substantially, but there's, and some are at 20% that we just appropriate proportionally.
Right, and I will bring it back to the next.
To those departments, but they're, they're not, at least on paper to me, looking that their percentages are the same. And there may be a reason for that, I just don't know.
Yes, I'll bring it back to you at the next workshop.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, guys, I heard very, very good things from the chamber and other folks about getting ready for and operating during the cladium festival for, so thank you very much. I know they were, I mean, there was zero complaints, and my question is, I haven't got out and walked around, was there any, other than just normal grass wear and tear, was there any significant damage caused by the festival, neither location?
We did a walk-through today. I didn't see any significant damage, and we ran irrigation in both places. There was nothing that stood out. Sometimes if they drive a tent stake through a main line, it might take a week to show it to surface, but all, I mean, that's negligible. Everything looked good to me.
Okay, good deal. By changing around, getting rid of that barbecue grill, we're, or, I know I was out of town, were people able to get around that area? I mean, I understand it was very, very crowded around that entertainment area, so.
Yeah, we actually were able to put two picnic tables underneath that little awning, and everybody loved it, and it was easy to get around.
Well, thank you very much, and hopefully, I think maybe it's a credit to Jennifer Bush too, that she was, got with Phil and you guys in advance and very clearly laid out what their desires or expectations were, so I know it was appreciative.
Eva reminded me that we got to do the CRA now.
Before we get off of this, can you just explain to the rookie up here the difference between cultural services and horticulture?
The cultural service is only Lake June Park.
Okay.
And then the horticulture is everything else that's not within the parks, that mostly this building and the highway, certain parts of the highway or what have you.
And now, I think the reason we have to kind of do that is because we are getting partial reimbursement by Highlands County, we have to demonstrate that is, that, that 110 has to basically be a portion of the O and M cost, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And they do audit it.
Maintenance should go down now that the FDOT's taking out all of our horticultural 27.
Or pavements.
So is CRA in this packet?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
They found it. They found something. The CRA start with the 103, so this is the revenue side of it on page six up here, but it's 103, 300. There's a sequence of numbers.
103 and 300, right?
103, that's 300, yes.
Ray, you had a question about the difference between the county's estimate and what was going to be incoming, the CRA and, and our staff, did, was that worked out to your?
Yeah, I, actually, I, I thought we were, I thought we were low, but we may have been high, so I'm, I'm, I'm good. I just, I remember seeing a number when they were showing what they were going to do that was different than what we had talked about, so.
And theirs was calculated on the 8.3. I got right to exactly their number, so.
Oh, okay.
Theirs is calculated on the 8.3 that you had said they're probably going to be going with.
Yeah, I know, I know that they, they agreed by consensus yes, is today Tuesday, I mean, yesterday, to go to 8.3, so.
I was notified by central contractors that all the equipment that they were waiting on came in last week, and they were going to look at this week or next week, beginning the project in Devane Park of refurbishing all the electric pedestals.
That was the only issue we had in our booth, was electric.
Good. So the only thing that comes into the CRA is the contribution from the county of the 108,000, and from the general fund, their part, 41,000, which is $150,000 and no expenses at this time, so was looking for projects to kind of put into this one.
So I'm sorry, why is the general fund putting, that's our part of retained? Okay, so our part of the retained is the 41, and the county's part is the 109 or 108. Okay.
Yes.
And so in round numbers, we have 150,000.
Yes. And there is no expenses, no expense side to it, waiting on projects.
What is, what is our legal obligation? Do we have to have a CRA budget for the new fiscal year, or can we, I mean, there's, do we have to take some action in September and have a balanced CRA budget?
Yeah, you have to create some expenses on it.
Yeah, you need to create some projects.
Right now, I have some like a generic catch-all kind of expense, uncategorized expenses right now, but even at the, at a later date, if you say, I want to do a budget amendment, this is what we're going to do.
Okay. So I would, as you, I apologize. I would suggest, as we're starting to figure out stuff, I would suggest, I would suggest that the roughly $10,000 or $12,000 that we obligated ourselves to for parking studies and an intersection improvement study, that we take that out of the CRA. I know, one, we, we agreed to do $6,500 share with the county, and they, they've approved that, the county commission. And then I think there was a couple of other projects that maybe totaled $6,000 or $8,000 that we agreed to do. So I would, I would take those two things out of the CRA. I would, obviously, we're going to have some rollover alleyway projects, especially when Mr. LeBlanc is done in the spring with his deal doing that. And then I think I would encourage us to buy a few more spare light poles and, and stuff like that that could go in that area that match. And then I think we ought to ask our staff to look and say, as you go up and down in particular Maine, is there a way to further either add light poles, add lights and trees? In other words, it seems to me it's still dark in that area. And I wish I had brought this up when the chief was there. I do notice on Friday nights that the same two guys, it's always the same two guys, park in the no parking area to go to wet dogs. Don Davies and the guy from the office supply store, I see their two vehicles every single Friday night. So I don't know if we need to do a little more striping or what the deal is, but those guys, I mean, it's like clockwork, you know?
Not to be specific, but yes.
I mean, they just pull right up there, and I just noticed it's those same two people are doing it. My wife and I usually go out on Friday night, we come back through town and I just see those vehicles parked right there, and it's just annoying. And, and I hope also, and I, I shared this with Phil, I know that for the festival, all kinds of people were parking in the median there, and I hope that we don't allow that to become a habit.
Yeah, we'll get on it.
And I don't want to, I don't want to ugly it up with a bunch of signs, Phil, but I just, I mean.
I won't get on it too bad, but I'll get on it.
I just didn't want all of a sudden, and I know we're going to talk next week about the, the whole farmer's market deal, and I know I at least, you know, sent Phil a whole bunch of concerns I have about blocking off the street 27, 28 times, but I think we kind of need to be thinking if we're going to have stuff like that, if, you know, one time we talked about food trucks, that maybe we ought to be having a conversation and use some CRA dollars, and if we need to do something on Pine or Stewart Street or Park Street, you know, and kind of have those be the areas that get designated for those types of things to block off. But what really makes zero sense to me is blocking off county roads and then deterring traffic, including big, heavy trucks onto town roads that we then have to take care of, and it's inevitable that they're going to cut corners and they're going to break the side of the road down, and, you know, instead of it being the county's problem, it's going to be our problem if we do that. I don't mind doing it for a festival or two, or an occasional thing, but if it's like I think, and that's some business that's charging for boosts, and now we're going to use public infrastructure to provide them a venue, then I'm going to have some serious problems when we get to that next Monday.
He, he sent back a considerable reply that I'll be sending out to everybody too. So he replied to all of my questions, but he still, they still want to be on the agenda, so.
But we don't, we don't have those replies yet. Have you sent those replies out yet, his replies to all those questions?
They, they sent replies to those questions that I sent out.
Do we have those replies?
I, I'll send it, I'll send it out.
But we, we don't have it yet.
No, I haven't sent it out yet.
Okay. I have similar concerns to you, and I, I sent them in as well.
So, what, I mean, I mean, I don't know CRA-wise, what else staff has in mind, but I see Mr. Barber's sticking his hand in.
Ray, I just wanted to clarify on that work that Panoni did, and I asked Eva to go back and look at minutes. I think only the intersection analysis was approved, and the county split that. There was three work items. That intersection analysis, it was $13,000. The parking study, which, don't remember how much it was, it was.
Three or four, two or three.
Two or three or four thousand, and then a code review, and the county gave us 6,500, and I assume the town was putting in 6,500 to do just the intersection analysis. So those other two items weren't approved.
My, my intention, my, my impression is, and you all checked the minutes, as the guy made them out, I think we intended and we approved those two projects and the 65.
Yeah, we were only going to cost share, split with, on the intersection, and then we were responsible for the other two.
I believe we, we approved in full pain for those. If we didn't, then we need to re-agenda them and do them, but I certainly remembered that that was our intent.
That's my recollection.
There was, so the last meeting, you approved 6,500, and the motion was 6,500 of the 13,000. There was a motion the previous meeting that was, the town was going to give 7,500, and at the time, I think I mentioned, and that, that replaced that motion, so you may have to bring it back if that was your intent to include all.
I was looking, was we were splitting the intersectionality.
Right.
50/50 with the county. Then we wanted them to do the other two studies, but we would be financially responsible for those two.
So do you want that brought?
And I believe the total was like $17,000.
Yeah, I don't know. I remember one was a couple and another was three or four, but, I mean, but that was the intent, but if we didn't do that, Eva, then we need to bring back those other two projects.
The motion did not indicate that. The motion itself did not indicate that.
Okay.
Supposed to be, as you said, it's supposed to be all of it.
Right.
Yeah, we were going to split with the county on the 13,000, and we were going to pick up the other two, and so if that other motion died in the process, it should not have.
Well, since those two items, neither of them, I don't think are over 5,000, does everything we spend in the CRA have to go before them, or can staff just authorize that?
If these are CRA funds, then the CRA would have to approve it.
I don't think they're CRA funds.
At the, at the time that you approved that, that's town council funds.
But that, my suggestion now is, is that that's an, I mean, I would, I would like to consider using CRA funds to do that, all of it.
Because it's in the heart of the CRA.
Right.
So, so I looked at our CRA plan, because everything we, that CRA does is dictated by that, that CRA plan, and it, it looked like to me, and Phil can we review, that you could possibly do the study, because it's part of a walkability infrastructure, some of the wording that is in that plan. So doing a, a parking study, parking is mentioned in y'all, in, in the plan, so, I mean, it's, it's feasible, you know?
Well, I would, I, I, I am, I'm the impression we committed to that, and I mean, so whatever we need to do to recommit to that, at least consider recommitting to that, then we need to do that.
Do you want to possibly, at the council meeting, redo your motion possibly to state, you know, we're going to pick up whatever the dollar amounts are.
Yep.
Recommend it to the CRA to fund, and then have a CRA special meeting and have the CRA approve it.
I'm assuming we're going to have to, we're going to have a CRA meeting, we're going to have a CRA, CRA meeting in September as well, correct?
Yeah, so, so I know you're the same board, but it's two separate.
Right, I understand.
Groups. So maybe at this next town council meeting, kind of address that in a motion, that it's going to go to the CRA for approval to have the CRA fund that to the county, possibly, right? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, so let's, here in the next couple of meetings, let's get it fixed.
Okay, all right.
If I could ask, Harry's, I mean, not Harry, Alan, we had already, we had already, I believe, we had okayed improving the electric in Devane Park, correct?
Correct.
And that's what you're working on. Do we need to improve the electric in Stewart Park, or is it all okay?
Yeah, there, there's, there's some areas that, they get sprayed by sprinklers a lot, so I would say the inside has a lot of corrosion. They are working, but there are some panels that are wobbly, I guess, but yeah, there's, there's a couple panels that could be replaced.
And we, we had trouble at, at our booth with, in Stewart Park, that I didn't think, we didn't think any way there was quite enough juice in that particular panel. We had issues with how many booths. We had issues with how many booths they had going off of that one panel. So, maybe that could be addressed as well.
Every outlet has its own breaker.
Yes.
Uh, but there, the problem is, there are twenty amp breakers and people are putting in lots of crock pots and hot dog heaters. It depends on what, what, what would be considered safe. I mean, um, the, the, the problem is, anytime you do upgrades, it automatically has to match the N E C, National Electric Code. So, now you're looking at, they're all gonna be G F I outlets, which have to be replaced every couple of months, because if they get any kinda dampness there, they short out. Um, every time I have to do, there's an event at Devane Park, I have to replace between four and seven of those G F I outlets every single event. So, that's literally two, three hundred dollars a year we spend just replacing those outlets. Obviously, that's what's code, that's what has to be there. But even if you make it brand new, I can't guarantee it's going to withstand the draw required, unless we add a lot more outlets, I suppose.
If we're, if we're allowing, or whomever the, whomever the entity is that's having the festival, is allowing that many booths to pay for and have electric done, and we don't have the electric service to support it, then we're gonna have issues like, like we had, so.
And the other trouble we have is, if you are in the park, you're, you have access to the electric. If you're not in the perimeter of the park, you're supposed to have a generator. And a lot of these people are running cords right across the sidewalk that shouldn't be.
Yes, they are, yep.
So, that's, that's another issue.
And, and under whose, under whose purview would it be to address that with those vendors?
And that's, that's kinda what I wasn't sure of either, because that kinda fall, that fall, that falls under us, but then we'd have to, you know, as soon as we tell them and walk away, they, they could go and put it right back. So, it should be under Jennifer or someone from the chamber that it's constantly there to express that to the vendors. But it also falls under the town, because if they don't properly tape it off or whatever, it becomes a tripping hazard and that's right back on us.
And then it pulls the more electric for, and you don't have the electric to pull?
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, we need to straighten that out.
Well, and I mean, I want us to have the service, but I mainly wanted to make sure that what we have is safe, so that we don't have something where when someone tries to rig something, they get the shock of their life. That's what the biggest concern is. I just don't want us to have something that was kinda piecemeal together and then it becomes a, a safety hazard.
I, I, I don't think Stewart Park is safe.
Yeah. I, I went through and checked everything and I can tell you, I saw about three or four, three or four areas that concerned me as far as just the looseness of it and the corrosion. I made sure everything worked. I mean, it wasn't an immediate threat, but if someone's plug got stuck in there and they yanked on it, that, that whole box might've came right off the pedestal. So, yeah, there are, there are things that could be upgraded. Uh, what, I wanted a little more clarification. I know we've talked about it several times in the past, but the lighting on Main Street, do you want the street itself more lit up? Because right now, what we have is the antique globes and there is no direction given to the light being emitted. So, something would have to be reflective, pointing it down to the ground. And the only things that I've seen that do that don't match up to the style pole we have. I was hoping we could just replace the head of it and, you know, just use the existing lamp, but I haven't found anything that matches up. So, we would have to replace the entire pole more than likely. And then you're looking at it not being antique.
No, that's not my suggestion. I guess my suggestion was just for y'all to think about. I guess my thought was, if you can think of ways within the style, within the uniformity, to get a little more light there, fine. If not, then we'll deal with it. And it's, and I guess I should've looked, uh, Phil, did we, speaking of decorations, did we, in the past couple of years, we've put some Christmas decoration stuff in the budget? Did we budget that again in here this year?
This same amount, seventeen thousand. It, uh, should buy us about forty-two, depending on price increase, I would say between thirty-five to forty-two. Uh, and that will replace about the twenty or so that we have that are old, noticeably dimmer than the rest. So, that'll, that'll do that. And then it should allow us to continue on all the way down Inner Lake and possibly towards South Main.
And like, I guess as just one guy, again, I mean, my understanding of the CRA, what's interesting is, we have to have a plan to spend most or all the money in a given year. We're not supposed to just start amassing significant fund balance there, right?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess, to me, again, those kinds of decorations, you know, if we don't have other projects and I just soon shift some of that cost out of the general fund and put it in CRA, since it benefits that area, benefits all the businesses in that area.
And maybe we need to revisit the actual plan that was passed, because I'm not sure where those type of things fit in the infrastructure intent of how you set up the CRA.
I, I understand. I mean, as we, when we set it up, I remember specifically, we made sure that, that we weren't gonna spend money for any individual businesses. The intent was, we were gonna do primarily infrastructure that benefited the whole area.
And, and maybe the CRA board, you can tweak it.
Right.
So, if you need to tweak it, to add a little bit of different language, to add a little more of that. I know there's some beautification in there, so it could fall under there. I just wanna make sure, you know, that you're, you're, because under state statute, you gotta follow that plan and, and that's what that is. But we can look into it, 'cause I think there's some, there are some areas in that plan that are a little, you could fit certain things in there, you know? So, I think maybe, I'll bring back, so you can reread it, everybody get familiar with it again. I'll bring it back.
If you could email.
I can, I can email. It's a large, it's a large document, so I'll probably send you a link. I'll do an attachment link.
I have it on the website.
Is it on the website, Phil?
That's page of the website, maybe.
It was on the web, it's, on the CRA tab, but I, I hadn't looked in a while.
There.
And really, it's towards the back end of the, the front end is basically all the.
Right, the frilly stuff and nuts and bolts.
Well, basically, the statistics and how they came about it, but it's usually, it's around, I think it's around page fifty or something, just as.
So, have, have we negated the need for August tenth, or can we go just directly to September twelfth?
I was gonna ask you how, how you wanted to do that. Are, are you good?
I mean, it seems like there's relative, just a few things that Rachel was gonna look into. I mean, I just soon, y'all know, I mean, just soon skip the tenth and go directly to September twelfth.
Consensus, three, three point one five, then the consensus was, so.
Yes.
I just, before we, I just wanna ask you, Ray, what, is there a problem with the lights that are currently on Inner Lake to continue those down South Main, or did you wanna change the style? Or would they not provide the light that you're looking for down Main Street?
I, I don't, and I always hate to complain about a problem when I don't even have an idea of solution. I don't have a solution. I just, I know that that area is kinda dark and that at night, when people are crossing across the street, especially with no clear area of where they're supposed to be crossing, it's dark down there. And, and then I also, from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, I go to other areas and they have, you know, lights that are shining up in the trees and they're creating lights and they're focusing in trees, or there's lights, you know, there's white lights in the trees. And so, for me, it's both, okay, how do we light that area up a little bit, make it a little more attractive, and make it a little more aesthetically attractive. And to me, if, if we have paving projects and real inf, and sidewalk projects, great. If not, and we're looking for projects, I'd just soon take a couple of these things that are in the general fund in, in this next year, use CRA money to pay for them and put that money in the general fund, back into fund balance.
The lighting is all, that, that is definitely specifically notated in that.
And the, the trouble we had was that, is if that's not put in before those trees are established, it's gonna be a nightmare, uh, potentially killing all those trees if you run a ditch witch along them to put the power in. I mean, I, I'm not disagreeing with lighting, but I just mean the in-ground light, that like the flush fixtures that shine up, uh, that, we actually took all those out of Stewart Park, because they were a constant problem between tripping hazards and just shorting out from being in, in the ground.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look at other things that we can do.
I can help you some with that too. I have some, quite a bit of experience with that, so I can help you with that.
Uh, and as far as two other projects that, uh, have been pushed to the wayside the past two or three years, is Hendrix and Plaza Street being repaved. Uh, I would like to see those done and out of the way, if possible.
I'm sorry, would you explain to us, I mean, I, I don't know where they are at?
Hendrick Street is the one that is disintegrated down to, we pretty much lost that road. It's gonna have to be built back from scratch.
Where is it?
Uh, next to Ohio, Michigan. It's the one that runs.
Down there by H T N Network?
Yes.
Going north and south?
That way, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the other one, Plaza Street, directly behind the tower. We recently had to do a little patch job there, uh, from a water caused issue. But you could literally stand there and start flipping up pieces by hand. It was, it's only like a half inch thick there and it's, it's disintegrating. Uh, so, yeah, if we could get, uh, we have, I don't know what the quotes are offhand, but I wanna say they were ten thousand, thirteen thousand at the time that we got the quotes.
I'm good with that.
We can put them on the list.
Yep, put them on the list.
Alright.
Does council have any useful, uh, any use or any, uh, further questions for Harry and Joe and? I think we're all about to go.
For me?
I, I think he's got a drive tonight.
Got a three hour drive ahead.
You guys are excused if you wanna.
I'm good, I'm.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I think we just get the amendments on September twelfth and we'll talk, deal with it then.
We cover everything?
Yes. So, no more August meetings?
I think that's up to the mayor, but I think we're not gonna meet anymore of this.
No more August meetings and straight to September twelfth?
No need to.
Got it.
We've never done it in one meeting before, now. Must be your addition.
I'm sure it's me.
It is. And I'm gonna send out the CRA, the, the original plan and everything, just so that everybody can kinda refamiliarize themselves and everything. We got new councilmen and everybody needs to know what, how we got what we got. I'll send that all out. Catch us on YouTube tonight. We're transmitting.
Okay, nothing else to come before council?
Thank y'all.